I'd like to call the Common Council of the City of Lafayette to order. Would everybody please rise for our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I said that a little louder. I didn't see Mr. Kaepernick there, so I guess we're okay.
That's a national anthem.
Would the clerk please conduct a roll call?
Heidi?
Here.
Clinker?
Here.
Nargie?
Here.
Reynolds?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Aldersmeyer?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Downing?
Here.
Campbell?
Here.
For in present.
I would entertain a motion by a member of the city council for the suspension of rules for a public hearing on Resolution 2016-16.
So moved, Mr. President.
Mr. Brown, second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Thank you.
Resolution 2016-16, a resolution confirming the designation of certain real estate as an economic revitalization area and approval of an application by Ambrose Lafayette LLC for property tax abatement, Ambrose Lafayette LLC Real Estate.
Is there any comments or input from members of the audience? There being none, would the council then give us a motion to reconvene?
So moved.
Second?
Yes.
Ms. Williamson, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Thank you. You have received the minutes of the August 1st meeting. Are there any corrections to those minutes? Then we'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes as communicated.
So moved.
Mr. Downing?
Sorry.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same sign. Those minutes are approved as communicated. Presentation and disposal of claims.
There are none.
Petitions and communications.
There are none.
Reports of city offices.
Fleet maintenance, monthly July, water pollution control department, monthly July, waterworks department, monthly July, and police department, July.
Those reports are on file in the city clerk's office. You may examine any time at your convenience during office business hours. Ordinances for second reading.
Ordinance 2016-15, an ordinance to amend, amend an ordinance 2015-27, an ordinance fixing the salaries of appointed officers and employees of the City of Lafayette, Indiana, for the year 2016, excluding the sworn protective occupation and law enforcement members of the policeman fire department.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, I move to hear and approve second reading.
Mrs. Nargie?
2016-16.
Thank you.
Second?
Second. Any comments by members of the common council? Mayor?
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you for hearing this ordinance. As we've discussed in the past, this ordinance deals with positions that we're creating within the City of Lafayette, within the budget that you set forth, but we've changed some of those positions to better meet the needs of our citizens and the overall operations of the City of Lafayette. Those positions include a new position, a change of position in the Human Resources Department. We had a change there, and we were able to evaluate that position. As the city continues to grow, we're still operating with just three people, and to be able to do that, we needed to change some designations, some tasks, duties, and responsibilities, and change a job description in the Human Resources Department. In engineering, we need to create an ERP project manager position to work with the new Tyler system to help manage all the products and projects that we have throughout the city. And in parks, we are creating two general maintenance laborers positions, as you've probably seen for the summer, which is a good thing. Our parks are incredibly heavily used. We have a lot of different events. We have a lot of trails, swimming pools, and we simply need a couple more people to help keep up on that. We'd like to get them hired now in preparation for next year. As you know, we're going to do several playground projects and other projects here within the Parks Department, and we'd like to get these people on board and get them trained. With all these positions, there is no request for additional funding. We've managed our money well, and we can do this within the budget that you passed earlier in the year, so we're not asking for any extra money. We're just asking to be able to shift some of this money around and some of the job descriptions around, and we'd appreciate your approval.
Thank you, Mayor. Any questions or comments to the mayor? Anybody in the audience wish to address this particular ordinance? There being no comments, once again, from the city council, anything? Would the clerk then conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2016-15?
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Aldersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you.
An ordinance of the common council of the City of Lafayette authorizing the investments of public funds pursuant to Indiana Code 5-13-9-5.7.
Mr. Clinker?
I move to hear ordinance 2016-16 on second reading.
Mr. Heidi?
Yes.
Any discussion by members of the common council? There being none? Mr. Jones, would you like to speak, or somebody from your office?
Mr. President, Mike Jones, Controller. Before you, you have an ordinance that will allow us, excuse me, to formalize an investment policy. It's a very important piece in, as we move along, for any kind of debt service that may come up in the future. Bonding companies like to see formal policies. It adheres to all the state statutes. It just puts it in writing, in the fact that you folks have seen it and approved it. We would not go beyond two years in any one immaturity, and we would never exceed more than 25% of the total public funds, which again falls inside of the state statute. In fact, we had a bond call here not too long ago discussing things, and one of the questions that came up, do you have a formal policy? So that was the impetus to do this. The second piece of that would, of course, as we go along, we would end up doing a cafer, and all of those things would look, or reflect favorably on our bond rating as we move into the future.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Jones? Sure, you're going to make us a lot of money, correct?
Well, I don't know that there's a lot of money out there to be made, but it would take our idle funds and do a little more with them than what's available in the bank right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience wish to address Mr. Jones and this particular ordinance? There being no one, once again, the council, last chance. None, would the clerk then?
Okay.
Beg your pardon?
I was going to ask him where he got that tie, that shirt.
Oh. Oh, checking out people's hair.
Okay.
Would you clerk, please conduct a roll call?
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Aldersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Or just passes eight to zero.
Ordinance 2016-19.
An ordinance to amend Chapter 2.07, Commission on Human Relations.
Mr. Downing?
I move to pass ordinance 2016-19.
Mrs. Williamson, thank you. Any discussion? Well, I, before we start, I would ask that, we would prefer that people who address this be residents of the City of Lafayette. Secondly, the clerk will time and present. You will be allowed three minutes to make your point. We would ask that you do not restate the points of previous speakers. And we will once again do it on an alternate basis as we did the last time. If the people who are for the particular ordinance would line up along the left side, and the people who are against it line up along the right side. And I would also ask that you refrain from raising your signs. They are very well-done signs, but there might be people behind you who will not be able to see. I notice that Purdue does not allow you to use umbrellas over at their place, but we're just going to say something about signs at this point. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you for hearing this ordinance, and thank you to Melissa Wies-Williamson and Lauren Aldersmeyer for sponsoring this ordinance. We certainly appreciate that. I know that we have a lot of people to speak here this evening, so I will keep my comments brief. I think it's appropriate, though, to first of all, thank everyone that was here last time. As you know, we had a good dialogue, very civil, very respectful, for those on both sides of this issue, and I know there's a lot of passion on both sides of this issue. But I can tell you quite frankly, I was proud to be from Lafayette after the last meeting and the way that everybody conducted themselves and treated each other with dignity and respect, and I certainly hope that that will be the same way that we'll have it here this evening. As I stated at the first meeting, I am in full support of the amendment to this ordinance. As I said, I know there's passion on both sides, and I certainly respect that. But with the first ordinance that was passed many years ago, was quite controversial at the time, and I think we saw that that's been a tremendous plus for this community. As the mayor, as a citizen, as a father of four children, and three of them are girls, I'm fully comfortable with this ordinance. I'm fully comfortable with moving forward with this amendment. I feel that we're moving in the right direction. We are a community that's inclusive, that we don't discriminate. I've looked at it from many different sides, and I believe this is the right thing for us to do, and I ask your support for this amendment to the ordinance. I don't think there's any reason to keep talking, but I think made it very clear, I'm supportive. I feel it's the right thing to do. I don't have any fear of passing this ordinance. I have many, many, many family members that live with inside the city limits of Lafayette, and I have no fear of passing this ordinance for our community, and I ask for your full support.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, if you'd line up, folks, once again. See, I think we said, you're over there? Yeah.
It'd be better.
Oh, okay, well, he's taking a roll call already. If you, yeah, the people for it will line up on the right-hand side, the people against will line up on the...
Our right hand.
My left, your right, whatever.
We'll get disorganized.
Yeah.
We'll get disorganized.
Yes, sir. And with the limit of three minutes?
Do my best. Randy Stute, I live at 3014 Ferry Street. I serve as the chairman of the Lafayette Human Relations Commission, and I want to point out a couple of things that we talked about last time and add to that. The commission is charged with two goals. First, to investigate claims of discrimination in employment, housing, and public accommodations in the categories outlined in the ordinance. And second, to educate the citizens of Lafayette on the issues of discrimination, diversity, and inclusion. And during the past couple of years, the HRC has investigated categories which are currently underprotected or not covered by our local code, and as we have seen cities across the state add or adopt more inclusive human relations ordinances, we felt it was time to act. So the ordinance before you tonight includes gender identity, veteran status, and age, and those statuses are proposed, are defined in the changes. You'll probably remember that Mayor Jim Reely, under him, the ordinance was expanded to include sexual orientation. We were one of the first three cities in Indiana, along with Bloomington and West Lafayette. The commission believes that this expansion will meet the following goals. First, it continues Lafayette's commitment to fostering a welcoming and inclusive community which recognizes the value of every person, promotes tolerance, and respects the right of each individual to be free from discrimination. Second, it recognizes and values the service of our men and women in the armed services and reserves by encouraging respect and support for them in employment, housing, and accommodations. And third, it enhances the right to privacy for a population which often suffers from bullying, harassment, and discrimination. Now, I'm sure that there are others who will be addressing the objections that are going to be brought up by the opposition, but I do want to address one aspect. Many will state that small businesses will suffer lawsuits, but there's really no right to sue and recoup damages in this current ordinance, and state law does not allow that either, as gender identity is not covered in state civil rights law. The local process is as follows. The HRC is tasked with mediating disputes when a claim is filed. We investigate if mediation does not work, and when the investigators are done, they bring their findings to this room to the full commission for a public hearing. The full commission then votes to amend, accept, or reject the findings, and that finding is made public, but only if one of the two parties doesn't show up, then there's a fine. Other than that, there's no fine involved. Now, I would ask that you look at what's happened in cities across the state. They've all updated their human relations ordinances, and I ask you especially to look at the records of cities like Bloomington, Indianapolis, and most importantly, West Lafayette, right across the river. The fact that they've implemented these policies without the dire results predicted by the opposition tells you that we can feel comfortable voting in favor of these changes here. The Lafayette Human Relations Commission unanimously supported this expansion with a resolution in our April meeting. We urge you to support this, and I stand ready to answer any questions, provide any necessary support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You want to lower that microphone for this young lady?
I'm too short.
Yeah.
I'm Debbie Morgan. I live at 3859 Morris Drive here in Lafayette. When I think of city and our county ordinances, I think of regulations that will bring about positive change for the future. However, I feel that this ordinance may result in situations occurring that our city will regret. If this ordinance is passed, I feel that it would open the door for those who would prey on women and children. As a woman who is blind, I would feel very upset if a male was in the restroom with me. How would I know if he were peeking under the stall door at me? I'm not saying that I think a person who is transgender would do that, but I fear that sexual predators would pretend to be transgender so that they could molest women and children. When I think of my grandchildren, I'm sad because I wonder what the future holds for them here in Lafayette. I'm pleading with you to please table this ordinance and give it more careful consideration. Thank you for letting me exercise my right to freedom of speech.
Thank you, Ed. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Brian Bell. I live at 814 Sunrise Avenue in Lafayette. So let's just dive right into the bathroom predator fallacy. So to put us all on even understanding, sexual predators commit crimes that are punishable to the fullest extent of the law, and as Mr. Suits said, this human relations ordinance to include gender identity does not change that law whatsoever. If we look at the typical profile for sexual predators, University of Michigan gives us some demographics. Ninety-nine percent are straight, I'll say cisgendered, not transgendered males. Of those, about 60% are white, 40% other races. There's also creepy guy myth. The creepy guy in the corner is your molester. Actually, predators are across the spectrum, and many are people that you wouldn't expect, straight A college students and adults upstanding in their community and faith organizations. Now, if we look at the incidence of male predators dressing as women to commit sexual crimes in the US and Canada, because that's what we're talking about, there have been five, and that's been from November through April, last year, this year. One in Seattle, Washington, one in Los Angeles, and one in Little Bridge, Virginia. So there have been none before, and since April, there have been none reported. That was, came from the Daily Wire, which is a conservative Christian publication. As far as Indiana is concerned, there are no incidents of male predators dressing as women to commit crimes since 1993. This is because in 1993, Minnesota and Indiana started with areas across the United States to provide gender identity protections with essentially no negative consequences toward women and children in over 20 years. Currently, the number of US cities, counties, and states with gender identity protections for employment, housing, and public accommodations as of August, there are more than 225 jurisdictions across the United States, including 20 states and the District of Columbia that give full protections. As far as Indiana is concerned, Bloomington in 1993 gives a start of a wide range of political and religious diversity, Indianapolis and Marion County in 2005, Monroe County 2006, West Lafayette and Purdue University in our own backyard in 2010, six years ago, no incidents. Then we have Evansville, South Bend, and others, Munster, Valparaiso. So in conclusion, since 1993 in Indiana, there simply hasn't been any evidence or incidence of bathroom sexual predators dressing like women to get access to our women and children. This is simply a fallacy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Donna Marshall, I live at 2232 Sheron Road in West Lafayette. Are any of the nine Commission on Human Relations members here tonight, if you were, if you're on the, any of the nine members of the Human Relations Commission, can you raise your hand? I see one hand. Is there any more of the nine here? Two, three, there's nine members? Okay. How many, how long can a member be on this committee that's going to be looking at all these cases? How many years is the term that they should serve according?
I make the assumption four.
Okay. Does anybody know for sure? This is what we're voting on tonight. It says here, this is the bylaws when this commission was created in 1976. It says it's for a three-year term. Each appointment is for a three-year term, okay? And it says that members can be removed for cause by the mayor or the council. Okay, this is Lafayette's website today, and these are the nine members that are on this council today. How long has D. Wayne Moffett been on this committee? Does anybody know? How about Karina Alterton Childress? How long?
I mean, this is your opportunity to speak.
Okay. So you don't know how long these people have been on the committee that are going to be judging all of these cases of discrimination? Seven of the nine have been on this committee since at least 2012. I have the minutes from your site. January 26, 2012, Randy Stutt, Brian Bell, Karina Alterton Childress, D. Wayne Moffett, Joel Wright were present. Cheryl Harmon and CJ Brown were absent that day. Seven of the nine are still on here, and it says it's for a three-year term, and this is your bylaws. I don't think this vote is legal tonight. I don't think, it's going, you're going against your bylaws. Explain to me, I need you guys to explain to me how this, how you can do this if it's only a three-year term, and it's been four years and nine months these people have been on this committee.
I will, I will answer.
This needs to be answered before this vote. Everyone here needs...
Ms. Marshall, if you, you know, normally we don't answer questions, but I will answer this question. That commission recommended an ordinance. This city council that was voted in by the people of the City of Lafayette are the only people that can approve this amendment. So it doesn't, it doesn't have anything to do with what you're talking about, the legality...
No, I understand that, but these are the nine people that are going to be judging all these cases of discrimination, and it says that they can only be on here for three years. And just so happens, January 26, it says, this is the meeting, we're going to add age, gender identity expression, and veteran status to the relations. Drafting is relatively easy to accomplish. Strategy is the more complicated. Needs to be worked out with commission members and local citizens. In this minute, we talked about making a Facebook page, YouTube videos, that we're going to contact Pride of Lafayette and transgender...
Thank you very much.
This vote is not legal tonight.
Thank you.
You took some of my time. Is this legal, Mayor? I would like to know.
I believe the way it reads is they're appointed on three-year terms and can be reappointed.
Can be reappointed.
Yeah, they're just reappointed.
Can't either.
It just says...
Three-year terms, and they can be reappointed, like a council person can run and be reelected.
So these people that are, been working on this for four years and nine months, are they going to be the same people who are going to be judging these? And they could be going to be reappointing and reappointing? How do you get on this council? How does a person, I know the mayor has to appoint, has to approve, and the city council has to be majority.
Correct.
And how else do you get on this council? How do you get the names in front of you to get on the council? Okay.
And if you live in West Lafayette?
I do. I just moved there in January. I've been a citizen of Lafayette for 1999. I don't think this is a legal vote, because it doesn't stay on here, it can be reappointed anyway. I would like, in fact, Mayor, if I can give you my email, I would like you to email me that. Okay, I will.
Thank you.
Yeah, all commissions are here.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Tracy Leslie, and I'm here tonight to speak in support of this. I represent a group of clergy that submitted a letter of approval and support for this. I believe that was delivered to city council last Friday, so I am speaking on behalf of that group of clergy tonight. I speak in support of this and the important inclusion that this offers for veterans for gender identity and age. I recognize that gender identity does cause concern to a lot of the some, particularly as it relates to use of public restrooms, but as several people here have indicated already, there is no evidence that doing so would create any risk. While we all share concerns for especially our children when they use public restrooms, fears that members of the LGBTQ community would pose any threats, there's just no evidence or merit to that concern. But I speak more broadly with, as this relates to faith issues. I recognize that faith communities and individuals of faith hold conflicting views with regard to issues surrounding gender identity and civil rights. But the blessing of the country we live in is that religious institutions are able to speak openly regarding their varying theological positions, and yet separation of church and state must ensure that religious views are not imposed upon the broader civil context. Therefore, I would support this amendment to Section 2.07 so that our city might continue to support the freedoms and liberties of all people regardless of individual theological beliefs or positions, and uphold that national value of separation of church and state. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was here last time, and I brought documents. Would you mind if I pass them out before I read? Is that okay?
So you say within three minutes. Go ahead, do whatever you need to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Michaels, 38, King Fisher Circle, Lafayette, Indiana. Good evening, council members. Once again, let me thank you for working so hard to build an inclusive community that is free from discrimination and grants our people as much as possible safety, security, and privacy. I come tonight to ask you to reconsider the adoption of the amendment to our city's human relations ordinance. There are four simple problems with the amendment that require either a no vote from you tonight, or the proposal tonight of a further amendment to the ordinance. Some background. According to the ordinance itself, the purpose of the ordinance is this. This chapter is enacted by the common council to provide all of its citizens equal opportunity for employment, public accommodations, and housing. Accordingly, public accommodations is defined like this. Public accommodations means any place which is open to, accepts, or solicits the patronage of the general public, or offers goods or services to the general public, but does not include any place which is a bona fide private club where the accommodations, facilities, and services are restricted to the members of such club and their guests. And finally, discrimination is defined like this. Discrimination means any difference in the treatment of a person, including exclusion or segregation because of race, sex, religion, color, sexual orientation, handicap, familial status, or national origin. As far as the bathroom issue is concerned, segregation already exists with regard to sex, so the bathrooms are already not following under the discrimination policy. As it currently is worded, any sports club requiring membership would classify as a bona fide private club. Similarly, the argument could be made that school sports teams and PE classes are also private clubs, open only to members of the team or class. Even Sam's Club would fit as a private club under this definition. Now we come to the problems with the amendment. This amendment adds the phrase gender identity into the definition of discrimination and defines gender identity this way. Gender identity means an individual's gender related to self-identity, self-image, appearance, expression, or behavioral characteristics regardless of whether it conforms to traditional definitions associated with the individual's assigned sex at birth. Aside from the intrinsic ambiguity of language like self-identity and gender identity, adding this phrase to the ordinance introduces four very specific new ambiguities to the HRO. This language of gender identity could lead some people to believe it applies to locker rooms, bathrooms, and dressing rooms in public places. Some businesses will maintain gender segregation in bathrooms and face accusations of discrimination, while other businesses will feel pressure to eliminate gender segregation in bathrooms. However, the definition of public accommodations in the HRO does not specifically include bathrooms, locker rooms, or dressing rooms. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I am Rick Puckett. I am Rick Puckett, 1104 Salem Street, Lafayette. My name is Rick Orland Puckett, and I am the president of Pride Lafayette. But today I stand before you as a resident of Lafayette, a father and a pathall of residents of Lafayette, and assistant pastor of Congress Street United Methodist Church. I want to begin by thanking the Lafayette City Council for bringing this important amendment to a vote and for casting your vote for progress and inclusion. In 2014, a few months after I became authentic with who God created me to be, gay, I was looking for a place to put down roots and to call home. My youngest daughter, who lives here, told me to come to Lafayette. She told me that it was a safe place where I would be accepted and could grow as a person. I relocated here because I trusted her word. I found that Lafayette has not been a disappointment. Am I labeled? Absolutely. Some call me pastor, friend, a man of God. Others call me gay, fag, and abomination. I hate labels. Yet the world is run by us looking at each other, yes, those who are different than us, and placing them in a category of good or bad, right or wrong. Having been a pastor for over 30 years, I can speak with authority that this is done more in the faith community than almost any other. We are divided by theological and denominational, non-denominational lines, and we eat each other alive until we have a common enemy. Then we unite to conquer. The common enemy today is the transgender community. At the first reading of this amendment, local pastors encouraged the council and community to make this issue a matter of prayer. We live in a country, a community, which firmly embraces freedom of religion and separation of church and state. Our brothers and sisters in the transgender community have lived too long in fear, oppression, oppressed by the ignorance of others, and labeled as perpetrators, pedophiles, and deviants. Once again, the labels are wrong. Our transgender people, part of the Lafayette community, are part of our identity, an important part of the body of Lafayette. They deserve the rights and protections that are afforded every person living in this great city. Last month, my beautiful grandson was born at IU Arnett. He will grow up in Lafayette, and his opinions, morals, and biases will be greatly influenced by this community. I am confident that he will grow up respecting and accepting all people because of this amendment that will be adopted today. Thank you again for not only making this an affirming community for all people now, but for giving all of our children and grandchildren a safe future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Doug Schroeder, 3716 Tulareosa. Because of the apparent rush to get this thing passed, we've only had like two weeks to really do this, but since the First Amendment guarantees petitioning government for redressive grievances, we bring a petition that many, the well-majority of your constituents are grieved by. I, during the past less than two weeks, I have gone door-to-door in two neighborhoods, my neighborhood and one of a relative, and out of the more than 200 people that I talked to, 74.4% of the people signed a petition against this ordinance, and another 12.4% voiced opposition to it but didn't want to put their name on a petition. And then, plus, I went some other places, but that was more of a friendly combine, so it's not as, it's not as accurate of a poll, but in all of these people that I talked to in the last two weeks, 90.2% of the population is against this ordinance, and I'm not the only one that went on this petition, but we have 810 signatures here of people that oppose this ordinance. And I'm not sure what, who to give these to. I'll give them to somebody, but I would say it's probably more than the number of votes that many of you got in your last election run.
You may give that to the city clerk.
Thank you.
Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Kevin Bowers. I live at 1805 Claybrook Drive. I am a resident of Lafayette and a leader in our faith community. I stand before you to urge you to vote yes, to pass an updated human rights ordinance that protects, protects people from discrimination on the basis of their gender identity. This is a very real issue for me. Some members of the congregation I serve as pastor are transgender, one of whom frequently finds it difficult and at times too daunting to leave her apartment for fear of ridicule or worse. This is what life can be like for transgender individuals within our community, and it is a sad state of affairs when anyone is afraid to walk down the street because of their gender identity. I realize this ordinance will not solve this issue entirely for this individual or for others like her, but it is a step in the right direction, a significant sign of hope and encouragement to such individuals within our community. Some might tell you this ordinance is inconsistent with Christian faith and values, and I respectfully disagree. The faith tradition in which I serve as pastor affirms the intrinsic existence of the Imago Dei, or image of God, within each person, and that no matter how marred or obscured that image may be, that we should honor each individual as if we are honoring God's self. The leader of the faith tradition which I am a part is quoted as having said to his followers, "Whatsoever you do unto the least of these you have done unto me." This is an encouragement to his followers to look out for the well-being of all people, especially the most vulnerable among us. If those within our community who are afraid to leave their homes because of their gender identity are not among the least of these, then I don't know who is. I believe this ordinance is an important step toward valuing the intrinsic self-worth of all people and honoring the image of God within them. Passing this ordinance will send an important signal that Lafayette is an inclusive, welcoming city. Protecting the most vulnerable among us from discrimination is, in my opinion, simply the right thing to do. No one in Lafayette should face discrimination in the community we all call home. Again, I urge you to please vote yes, to protect people who are LGBT, and affirm that our city is welcoming to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Perry Bobby, 3700 Redbud Avenue. And I hope everybody did their homework and prayed on this the whole month since we was, app was gone from this. If this passes tonight, I know, I know there's a lot of good people, everybody's good and everybody's passionate on both sides of this, but if this passes tonight, in my heart, I think this is one of the saddest things that's happened in Lafayette. I've been here for 30 years, and there's been some changes, but I just don't think this is the answer to, I'm worried about my little nieces and everyone else, your grandkids. I'm worried about everybody's kids, and I just think it's a more thing to do. Please, put this on hold. You guys are rushing to, from front door to the back door. We need some more time. Uh, just 30 days, no, that's not enough time. Put it this on hold. I've been going to the door and talking to people, and one, the number one question people's asking me, "Has come this wasn't brought up last year?" And I said, "It's election year." This should have been up to the people, to the vote. Cause, uh, I'm going to get myself in trouble. Please, put this on hold and vote no, if you have to vote tonight.
Hi, my name is Sky Brown. I live at 1701 Pierce Street. I can't remember a time in my life that I've actually felt safe. As a trans person, I've experienced violence from people as varied as my family to complete strangers, simply for existing authentically. A lot of the personal terrorism I've experienced as a trans person has come in my attempts to access public restrooms, and it started before I even was in my double digits. At this point, having survived two decades of this, I have a complicated routine for trying to even use public restrooms. I canvass the entire space or building to figure out how many sets of gendered restrooms there are, which ones are more hidden or less utilized, and whether there are any gender-inclusive restrooms or single-stalled gendered restrooms that I could use without being bothered. I built a mental map of the public restrooms in Lafayette, and I also know that between 7:30 and 9:00 AM, and 12:15 and 2:00 PM are the most common times restrooms will be in use, so I don't use them during those times, even though I also know that those are the times my body is also most likely to need restrooms just like everybody else. If I can only find multi-stalled gendered restrooms, which is more often the case than not, I walk by the restroom door several times at varied times to listen how busy it is and to collect data points for busy times. If I'm in a large store like Walmart and the restroom's always going to be busy, I just don't go. I actually have internal injuries from a lifetime of gender-based violence and the complexity of trying to enter restrooms without the threat of rape or death. If I enter a restroom and there's a line, I immediately leave and enter another restroom because it's safer to be caught switching restrooms than staying in a restroom long enough for someone to inspect my body somehow and determine I don't belong there. When I'm in a restroom, I memorize the shoes of anyone else who comes in so I can look for them when I leave in case they're waiting to attack me later. And while these examples are personal, they're not unique to me as a trans person. There's a lot of trans people who experience these same forms of violence. There's also much more, but you get the picture. I say all of that to say that when someone says they're worried about a policy or a practice creating violence for somebody, I take that very seriously. I understand the emotional, physical, spiritual, and the massive daily lifelong impacts violence, especially sexual violence, has on our bodies and our wellness. Therefore, as someone who contributes to violence prevention as a trans person, as someone who's lived longer as a girl and a woman than any other gender, and as a survivor, I need people to know that there's no research or precedent to support that allowing people of all genders to be protected in our employment, housing, and public accommodation will increase the incidence of violence even in restrooms. In fact, precedent shows the opposite. And even though I can't count the number of times I've experienced physical assaults, verbal harassment, or discrimination, I can count the number of times I've reported it because it's zero. I never even tried to report my experiences because what's the point when our political infrastructures don't see trans people as real and our communities see us inaccurately as perpetrators instead of people? This ordinance is important because if nothing else, it recognizes the basic humanity of people of every gender, and it gives trans people in particular an opportunity to have some kind of recourse when we do experience violence and discrimination. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Dr. Lee Henderson, 34, King Fisher Circle here in Lafayette. I'm passing out to you a report about the most comprehensive study performed yet regarding sexual identity, gender, gender identity, and transgenderism and sexuality. This report was presented by two physicians from Johns Hopkins Hospital, psychiatrists who are highly respected, and they themselves studied over 200 studies regarding this issue. Basically, they found no scientific basis for gender identity issues as you've heard from the media. The Johns Hopkins was one of the first medical facilities to provide transgender surgery, gender sex reassignment surgery. They had to stop the program because they were not getting the benefits that they had hoped they would get for the patients. They found, in fact, that adults who have undergone sex reassignment surgery continue to have a higher risk of poor mental health outcomes. In one study, compared to controls, sex reassigned individuals were about five times more likely to attempt suicide and about 19 times more likely to die by suicide. This was not a beneficial action for them. The belief that sexual orientation is an innate, biologically fixed human property, that people are born that way, is not supported by the scientific evidence, and you can see that in this report. The idea that a person, a man, might be trapped in a woman's body or a woman trapped in a man's body is also not supported by scientific evidence. Again, they studied over 200 studies regarding this, and they call for more research to be done to find out how to help this situation. Even children who are, who may be, have gender-atypical thoughts or behavior as children, the great majority will grow out of that as they grow into adolescence and adulthood and do not remain that way in adulthood. I've also learned that people who have had hormone treatments, reassignment surgery, and so on, have just much worse outcomes.
Thank you very much, sir.
Good evening, Mary Finnegan, 501 South Third Street here in Lafayette. When I listen to the arguments here, one of the things that just struck me is that it seems as though if you are transgendered, you have to prove it as far as your emotional makeup, because people are saying, oh, you can just throw on a dress, do what you want. That's not true, and there are more than enough studies that also show that gender identity can change, or a person who is born one way, perhaps there's chemical imbalance, who knows? But they do, that is how they want to live, and that is what they feel their life is about. And I'm hearing people say that because we don't like this and we're uncomfortable, that we should ignore them, ignore their lives, and just kind of push them off to the side as though they're insignificant. When you do that to people, you're just creating tiers of society. We've seen these fights over and over again, where some people want to hold on to the civil rights as though they are theirs and theirs only. Every person, regardless of whether they're transgendered or not, gay, straight, et cetera, et cetera, are entitled to the civil rights. That is what is in our constitution. And to stand up here and knowing that people are trying to minimize who these folks are is just very sad. Transgendered people have the right to go about their days without being harassed, without the threat of losing their job or losing their housing. This isn't about a bathroom bill. This is about people's lives, so I would appreciate if you would vote yes on this tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, Bert Chapman, 3250 Hendrickson Lane. Tonight's ordinance unfortunately reflects the poisonous cancer of group identity politics, which has been corrupting our country in recent years. Governmental entities have let themselves be fooled and intimidated by soggy movement lies and groupthink. Is the city council, as stewards of our resources, prepared to use taxpayer money to pay the cost, medical cost of gender reassignment surgery, which may surpass $50,000 if so requested by a city employee? Is the city council prepared to adopt and enforce hate speech ordinances when soggy proponents want to punish those who refuse to submit to their consciously chosen lifestyles? An example of this is HR 5272, which has been introduced during the current session of the US Congress. Is the city council prepared to use taxpayer dollar to pay the legal, psychological counseling, and public relations costs when someone is confronted or assaulted by predatory individuals on city buildings or- on city buildings or property? Successful communities are built on individuals with moral virtue and self-discipline, not the fraudulence of diversity and inclusion. I urge you all to have the courage to reject this same shameful expression of group identity politics and coercion, and to ignore its proponents' infantile claims that such a rejection somehow represents hate or bigotry. Thank you.
My name is Maria Nunez. I live at six eleven North Seventh Street here in Lafayette. I've lived here, it's been almost two years now. I started off in West Lafayette, and then I moved here. My best friend is transgender. I am not. I worry about her constantly, because of many of the issues that have been brought forward from other transgender people in this community. People have pointed out, and arguments like this will not necessarily protect them from street violence and harassment. I know that sex/gender discrimination for men and women does not protect me from those sorts of things, but it will allow them to get housing, it will allow them to get jobs. Again and again, I keep hearing people say, "Well, what about the women? What about the children?" And I have to say, as someone who has been, who is a woman, who has been a child, and as someone who is familiar with the fact that transgender people were once children too, I have to say, I don't think that this kind of ordinance would be putting me or any of them in danger, and in fact, I think it would be helping a lot of people, as they have said they've been assaulted in bathrooms because they're not welcome there. There's a lot of signs out here tonight saying, "Keep my city safe," and I have to say, "What about all these people who have experienced violence? Should we not be keeping them safe too?" I didn't really have anything written up for this. My apologies for my rambling. I just wanted to say my piece. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President and Council. My name is Raven Bright, and I am a high school student here in Lafayette, and I am a citizen of Lafayette, Indiana. As I've stood in line, and I've heard people present both sides of their opinions and their beliefs, I hear an overwhelming amount from the people who are affirming to amend the status quo, that they don't feel safe, and that they don't feel respected in their bodies, and that they want to treat their bodies the way that they should be allowed to, and the way that they feel they should. And honestly, I don't doubt that people have been abused in bathrooms, or that they have been mistreated. But I also want to bring something else to the table. They are very worried that people won't respect them. But I want to ask the question, what about the people who are being molested in the bathroom by those that are going to take advantage of this ordinance? There has already been evidence, I didn't bring any up today, but I read several articles several days back about a man that had went into Target, and he urinated in the bathroom, and it scared a young girl, because she did not understand why this man was in the bathroom. Or when we have sports events, and there are young girls, or even boys in there, and a boy comes into the locker room. I know for me personally, if this ordinance is passed, I'm not going to feel comfortable going to the bathroom in public, not because of people who identify as a different gender, but because of the people who are misusing this ordinance. Finally, I want to tell you a story. I work aftercare every day with young children, K through fifth grade. Today, my, one of my little girls, she is in fifth grade, I guess she's not that little, but she asked me, she goes, "Ms. Raven, why won't you be at work today?" And I was like, "Well, honey, I'm not going to be at work because I am speaking at a city council meeting." She was like, "What are you speaking about, Ms. Raven?" And I told her that I am speaking about people being allowed to go into bathrooms that are not transgender. I was telling her that people are allowed, anybody who had the desire to go into a bathroom anytime, anywhere. And she looked at me, and she said, "Ms. Raven, thank you for speaking about that, because it scares me to go into the bathroom now." And it scares me for all these children that I teach every day. If they're scared to go into the bathroom, at their school, or out in public, because they're afraid that somebody is going to hurt them or take inappropriate pictures of them, that's not okay. And I know that the gender, people who identify as a different gender want everyone to be safe and protected.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Lauren Sadler. I live at twenty-two twenty Banstead Court here in Lafayette. I don't have anything prepared. I wasn't going to get up here and talk, but I was compelled to. I am a transgender individual, and I am a student at Ivy Tech. I wanted to share with you some of my personal experiences. When I first started going to Ivy Tech, I was running into incidences where I had to use the bathroom. Started using the women's room because, well, that's biologically what I am, and so I was ran out of there by the women, because I guess when you reach a certain point in your transition, and the ladies are, you know, scared of you to be in the bathroom, it's time to move along to the men's room. So, for a long while, I was afraid of that, and I often would, sadly to say, here I am saying this publicly, I have urinated myself, holding it all day long while I was on campus, because I couldn't make it to the speedway in time to go to the bathroom. But you know what? This isn't about bathrooms. This is about something much greater. I am a student. I'm studying social work. I'm supposed to be in an internship right now, and I didn't get my internship. I can't prove to you for, you know, for a fact that the reason why I'm not in an internship is because my presentation, the way I present myself, didn't match at the time with my gender marker and my name, my legal name. I'm feeling like, you know, I, I've been on disability for the past almost twenty years. I used to weigh six hundred pounds. I'm trying to get my life back together, and part of that is being authentic, and being the real me, who I am. And part of that is also getting myself back into the workforce. I feel like I have a lot of stuff that I could help people with, but I keep running into walls because people discriminate. They do. I can't prove it, but I know that's what it is, because the interview went fine. It was supposed to be a for-sure thing. Purdue was supposed to get one intern, Ivy Tech was supposed to get one intern, I was the only one sent from Ivy Tech, and I didn't get it. I don't know. What do you think it is? All I got to say is pass this. This is people's lives, and I understand this side of the argument, I really do. I have, I understand it, but they're, they're so misinformed, and if they really took a moment here, I mean, do you want me in the ladies' room, people? Do you? I don't think so. Anyway, vote yes, please.
My name is Cindy Pratt. I live at eight two one Lazy Lane in Lafayette. And I can't agree more that there are hard sorrows, hard sorrows on both sets of the aisles. There's a big concern, and I'm going to speak faster, otherwise I'm not going to get it done. I am reading today a story of my friend who represents the other cases of hard sorrows, which represents a lot greater percentage of the population than our transgender friends do. And so I'm going to speed through it. She says, "Several years ago in this community, I was a victim of someone placing cameras in a woman's bathroom. There were many victims, including children, young ladies, middle-aged, and elderly women. The experience that followed the discovery of these cameras was incredibly eye-opening and painful. Here are some facts I wish you would all consider. Many women, children, youth are naive about their surroundings in their restroom. Once a violation occurs, victims are easily experiencing newfound fears, depression, denial, anxiety, nightmares, loss of trust in institutions, loss of trust in people, and more. The place of business where such violation occurs cannot erase the results of the violation, nor can they assure with much confidence that the victim will be safe. Passing of time after such an incident does not remove the ugliness or the veil that clouds the thoughts every time a public restroom is used. People who have not lived the experience of such a violation often do not grasp the depth of the offense and its effects. I personally had a very hard time believing the effects that it had on me. Not one to cry regularly, I found myself in tears every day for almost two months. Not being able to explain why or understand or how to shut that off. Just bringing it up now, as she writes this, I still find myself fighting to stay composed. I had considered myself to be a fairly adept at handling adverse situations, but not now. It has not been the case for me, nor has it been the case for many others. This is one instance where opportunity became a possibility, and then inaction. For someone who needed to feed his obsession with pornography, I learned quickly, more than I could imagine, a vast amount of pornographic activity out there. I also learned, as I am sure you are aware, that folks who are addicted to this activity reach levels of numbness, and the cycle continues to spiral, causing them to seek different avenues to attain whatever they need to satisfy, satisfy their urges. Although we cannot control all perpetrators, even with the separately identified bathroom facilities we have now, I believe removing some of the controls opens opportunities for those specifically seeking to find an avenue to meet their need to see, hear, or touch another in violation of space and privacy." Earlier, she even talked about she wanted to flee Lafayette because of such a thing. "My hope is that you will move forward with a choice to improve privacy in public restroom so, so that all humans have a sense of safety, comfort, and privacy. We have wonderful minds here in the greater Lafayette community. Why not decide to tap into those resources and begin developing bathroom facilities that meets the needs of safety of all?"
Thank you.
She said she understands why you want to consider it, but she wants you to consider her and all the other women that have been sexually abused.
Thank you.
My name's Emily Ramis. I live at eleven fifteen Brown Street in Lafayette. I'm a recent graduate of Purdue University. I wasn't intending to speak tonight, so I'm going to try to kind of go fast and remain as composed as possible. People whose gender identities do not match bathroom signs perfectly have the right to pee in a public setting. They have the right to go to the bathroom, in a public bathroom, that is accessible to all persons. We've heard several stories of like people who, I'm sure we've heard several kinds of people who've had, who have not been able to use the bathroom due to their lack of safety, and then we've heard accounts of people who felt, who do not, who either like are recounting their like, who are recounting not feeling safe in bathrooms due to what, due to a fear that relax, like the relaxing of these binaries of bathrooms would lead to. However, I would like to like argue that a lot of these crimes are often perpetrated by like cis, that are non-trans people. People whose gender identities do not match bathroom signs are not often the ones committing what we feel to be the, these abuses of power. The people who are most in need of all-gender inclusive bathrooms did not, in the first place, create binary-centric bathrooms, where only some bodies can go in one, and only other bodies can go in the other. I'm sorry to those who are afraid and have been abused, but I also am sorry to those who could wander around for hours without a bathroom, or who face, who face assault simply for going into any bathroom at all for who they are. I guess that's really all I have to say right now. I really appreciate it. Please pass it. I think it's really important. Many states within the United States still allow legal, like still legally allow discrimination against gender identity, and especially against trans persons. In many states, it is still legally permissible to kill a trans woman because you didn't think she would, because you thought she was a woman, and it turned out she was not. And I feel that, I feel that, I feel that passing an all-gen, an all-gender restroom or an all-gender inclusive ordinance would be a good step forward in relieving these kinds of laws, as well as in a future that is a more, is more like willing to talk about gender identity and gender expression as a protected status. It's like opens lines of conversation that leads to conversations that say, "You should stop assaulting people in bathrooms."
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Ingrid Rounds-Harty, and I'd like to thank you very much for the opportunity this evening, and for the purpose of providing all citizens a welcome environment, equal opportunities, and an exclusive environment in which to live. I've lived in this community long enough, as an African-American individual, to see the population go from less than one percent African-American to well, over seven percent. In doing so, I've also made that decision to remain here because I found this community to be inclusive and provide equal opportunities. By definition of terms, inclusive is like or affecting all in the same manner, and equal is not changing, but providing the same for each person. Historically, I, living authentically, would not be able to be accommodated by some restrooms, public transportation, or public restaurants within this community and various others. However, laws have been instated which provide me equal opportunities, not different opportunities. I agree that it's deplorable, some of the standards that many have had to suffer, and many of the discriminatory acts that have been displayed among those who have testified here this evening, but I realize that, as I've said, equality is not changing, but providing the same for each individual. Living authentically is not a self-imposed thing for me. It's not due to self-identity, self-image, self-appearance, or self-expression. However, if I was discriminated due to my age, my veteran status, or being handicapped, those are things that I would not self-impose. And so I'm submitting to you this evening that you would take the time to reconsider this, because as has been stated, this is not a bathroom bill, and many of the things that have been discriminated against the individuals here cannot be remedied by a bathroom bill. These are issues that need to be dealt with in order to provide a safe and inclusive environment for everyone. And so I don't believe that a gender identity bill or amendment can be grouped with age, veteran status, or handicap, safety, simply because it's not self-imposed. As I've stated, that living authentically for me is not self-imposed. It's my individual identity assigned at birth. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Alexander Mullenix. I've been a citizen of Lafayette for the majority of my life, other than when I did a brief stint in West Lafayette. But today, unfortunately for my cause, I am not transgendered, I'm not a woman, I'm not currently a child, any of the things that have been brought up about any of this, but I do, I do have many transgendered friends, I have many friends who are women, and I have family members who are women, and I, I would like to speak on a few misconceptions that have been spoken about today. One of it is that, that there might be any change in the legality of actions that would occur that would be harmful to, say, women and children. That in no way is going to change this ordinance. It's not going to allow people to start taking wild pictures and videos or anything like that throughout bathrooms. Generally, my bathroom experience, I go in, I use the bathroom, I wash my hands, and I leave. I don't know if you people are normally seeing other people like looking through stalls or anything like that, regardless of the gender. I mean, currently, there are gay men who are allowed to use bathrooms with other men, and I have not seen that happen ever. I know that there are lesbians who are allowed to use bathrooms with women, and I can't really speak on that instance. Additionally, someone spoke on the idea of any business being required to pay, specifically government having to pay, for a gender reassignment surgery, which isn't a necessary thing if you're transgender. Not all people who are transgender necessarily go through the reassignment surgery or get hormones necessarily, but if they do, they can become a visual representation of the way they feel inside. representation of the way they feel inside, which you could occur with the instance of someone who physically appeared to be a woman, and now they look nearly identical to me through the use of hormones, the use of, you know, changing traditional clothing styles or things like that, which would then, you'd have someone who looked identical to me, required to walk into a woman's bathroom and be next to your daughter, who, would that not be more concerning to you than someone who is making some sort of effort, which would be the average instance? Specifically, I would like to talk as well on the idea of, of, again, these women that might be supposedly attacked in restrooms, that in no way will change, the legality of it will in no way change, and I would recommend that people who have a serious concern about the idea of women and children being attacked, to put forth the effort to modify these laws that might have a less strict penalty than you would like, that might have lenience, that might not provide enough funding for rape testing, that might not provide enough funding for police to...
Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Brian Morrison, I live at thirty-four twelve South Twelfth Street. I would like to first state that I think we're going to have to take the issue of morality, which I've heard mentioned several times, and with today's culture, that's pretty much been swept under the rug, morality, code of morality. So I'm going to try and address this as a safety issue. I was really appalled, actually, when our mayor felt safe with this, because we are here to watch out for others. I've heard many opinions stated, and it seemed to be mostly prominent this evening, of the discomfort or the temporary uneasiness felt by those who think, who aren't sure if they are male or female. And being that, just that, I feel that it's far more important to consider the interest of others, which it says in our Philippians two, verse four, it says that we're not only to consider our own interest, but place the interest of others above our own. What I've heard repetitively this evening is individuals concerned for how they feel momentarily when they're walking into a bathroom, which they feel like maybe this isn't the correct one. The others that we need to consider are the innocent people, the little children who can become victimized because of predators or pedophiles having the right to walk into a bathroom and watch them. There may not be any crime committed at that point, but just getting to watch a little girl or a lady that just pours fuel onto the fire, and that may foster an offense later on. So I strongly stand against ordinance twenty sixteen, verse nineteen, or verse, I think of scripture. But I strongly stand against that as it is written. It either needs to be scratched or amended. I would like to propose, instead of making it, making it legal for a male to walk into a female restroom, that it be written as such that it be a requirement for any public facilities to provide a bathroom for males, a bathroom for females, and a neutral bathroom in all public facilities. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Michelle Leisinga, I live at twenty-two ninety-eight South Beck Lane in Lafayette. I had written down some thoughts and put them aside because there are people that came before me that said them so much more eloquently than I could have, and I was content to sit here and applaud them and support them until someone brought up the man who planted cameras in the restrooms and the effect that that had, and I completely understand, because that man was my father. And I was a victim of that. As a member of the church who worked there up until nine months before that incident took place, and as his daughter, I completely understand the fear that some people have in using women's restroom and the possibility that this ordinance might open up to them. I still encourage you to vote in support of this ordinance, because it's so much bigger than that, and I don't want a group of people who is already being oppressed to be further oppressed because people are afraid. That's not a good reason to oppress people, and I understand where they're coming from because I've struggled with what my father did for years, for four years, but I still would urge you to vote yes tonight, and I thank you for voting yes a month ago, and I hope that you will vote yes again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joe Bell, I live at twenty-five twenty-eight Potawatni Drive here in Lafayette. As you can tell, this is not your normal city council meeting, I'm sure you don't get this many at every city, city council. In fact, some said that they just heard about it a few days ago, and the word's starting, you know, to get out. And let me say, my heart goes out to the previous speaker and, and all of you, you know, I consider you my friends, not my enemies, I care about you, I don't feel like you should be discriminated against, I don't feel like you should be abused in any way, so I'm here to extend a hand of grace and dialogue and to do what we can. This is a great place to raise a family. I've, I've raised my four kids here, and grandchildren are being raised now, and it's always been a, just a safe haven, a safe place, and a great, great community, great coaches, great teachers. I'm just really blessed, and we pray that that, that continues. A federal judge recently issued a blockage on the Obama administration's directive that all public schools should open their bathrooms and locker rooms to transgender individuals. And that was backed by several other states and many school superintendents from around the country. They're very concerned. So the Supreme Court's going to rule on this in the near future, and so I'm under no illusion that, that we're going to change your vote tonight. However, I would like to encourage you to table a final vote on this as more and more information comes out, and until the Supreme Court rules, you know, on this. In anticipation of this directive by our president, one middle school here has banned all showers. A middle school. Can you imagine that? I've had middle school kids, if they come in from gym and sweaty, they need to take showers. We need to pray for our teachers who have to... So my, my appeal to you is just to table this for a little bit longer, at least maybe till the Supreme Court can, can issue their, their ruling on this. And again, I'm not, under no illusion that we can change your, your opinion or your vote. I mean, I was so persuasive last time I was here, I got outvoted eight to nothing. So, anyway, that's my appeal, to table this, if you will, and thank you for the opportunity to let me speak.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nikki Anderson of five twenty-one South Third Street. I'm also co-Vice President at Pride Lafayette. I'd just like to say, I am not a, well, I'm a resident of Lafayette, I am not native to Indiana, I am a Californian. I moved here eight years ago. I fought in California for LGBT rights, and we got them many, many years ago. Moving here, I assumed that everybody had those rights, and was kind of shocked to find out that transgender did not. I also found out that my boss stood up for me when someone tried to, when someone tried to discriminate against me, and they had said, I don't want to work with that lesbian. And my boss came and said, you can't do that, it's against the city, it's against the county, and stood up for me and told her if she didn't want to, she needed to find another job. This is about housing, this is about work, it's not just bathrooms, it's about lives, it's about being able to go to work, to be able to have a home. And I just want people to remember, it's not just bathrooms. Thank you.
Paul King, two oh three Trobridge Drive, Lafayette. I too, as Joe share, a compassion and grace to the transgender community, and I don't believe this is what this is about, this is about privacy and safety, and I could address the moral issue as a pastor and professor, but that would be a moot point. But what I do want to address is real life experience, that it has been mentioned earlier that there's only been five cases of transgender molestation, but do you want to open the door up to any? This is what was not cited. A Seattle man citing transgender bathroom laws was able to gain access to women's locker room at a public recreational center while little girls were changing for swim practice. This actually happened. They walked in the room, he took off, started undressing, women alerted the staff, told the man to leave, he said, the law's changed, I have a right to be here. No one called the police, who reportedly came back a second time when the young girls were changing their swimsuits for swim practice. Number two, a Toronto man claiming to be transgender was arrested and sentenced to jail for sexually assaulting several women in a women's shelter after he gained access to the shelter and its shower facilities as Jessica. He pulled down, he, she pulled down her bottom and bathing suit pulled to the side. The court also heard evidence of this person terrorizing a deaf woman living in the shelter, the accused grabbed the complaintant's hand and forcibly placed it on this cross area, crotch area while his penis was erect. Three, a Virginia man was caught and arrested for peeping on and filming two women and five-year-old child in a women's restroom after receiving entry by dressing in drag. He took pictures all over. Three counts of unlawful filming of a non consenting person, three counts of peeping. Number four, Los Angeles man dressed in drag entered Macy's department store bathroom, videotaped women under the bathroom stalls, hours of footage. Number five, two male students were caught at the University of Toronto exploiting gender neutral facilities in order to people and women in the shower with their cellphone cameras. These are real life experiences. Maybe they don't happen a lot, but it opens up the door to more and more predators. Again, it's not saying that transgender people are by and large that, but it opens up the door to all.
Thank you very much, sir.
Hi, my name's Lola Straub, I live at one ten Cardinal Court in Lafayette, and I did not plan to speak tonight, I have nothing prepared, but my daughter and my granddaughter would be ashamed of me if I did not get up and speak for them. They were members of the LGBT community. Neither is transgender, but they both have transgender friends. My granddaughter gave me a button that says, I'll go with you, and I'm wearing it tonight, and I am to wear this every time I'm out in public, as a signal to transgender women that if they are afraid to go into the restroom, that I will go with them, because they are afraid to enter restrooms anymore, because of all this stuff in the news. In fact, a young woman was followed into a restroom in Florida, and the young woman is not transgender, she's a lot like my granddaughter, slim, young, I saw her brother's flower shirts and jeans, she wears no makeup and no jewelry, and a man followed her into the women's restroom and grabbed her and said, you don't belong in here, just because that law's changed, and grabbed her and drove her around, and she said, what do you mean? She said, I'm a girl, you don't look like a girl to me. And also, I think everybody who's afraid of transgender people needs to know, you've been peeing next to transgender people for years, and didn't know it. Now, they don't have it, it's not on their forehead, just because someone looks, a girl looks masculine, doesn't mean she's transgender. She might be like my granddaughter, she likes to dress in that way, she likes to dress in, in a, you know, kind of a genderless way, and so does my daughter. So, they would be ashamed of me if I didn't speak out and say that I think the fear is misguided. When I was a kid, blacks were not allowed in the Colombian park swimming pool, and it was because of fear, and people quoted Bible verses that said they couldn't go in for those reasons, and it was wrong then, it's wrong now, this is wrong, it's not a moral issue, it's a civil human rights issue. I please ask you to vote yes. Thank you.
My name is Susan Spector, I live at one zero zero one Ferry Street. I really came to talk about bricks, but I've been sitting here, and I've been kind of offended that people feel I need to be protected when I go to the restroom. I'm up to it, really. But, but I think, you know, I go to, around the streets of Lafayette, and I see people with their cell phones that are out looking for pocket monsters, and, and I think there are a lot of people who are afraid of monsters here. I raised my children, and I was very concerned about sexual predators, very concerned, and so I took my children to the bathroom, I went with them, because I think that's what you have to do to protect your children, you have to watch them, you have to watch them all the time. I take my grandchildren to the bathroom, and I go with them, because yes, there are sexual predators. But I'll tell you what, my transgender friends, I will leave my grandchildren with, because they are very trustworthy people. So you need to recognize where the monsters are.
My name is Salma Branch, and I'm a longtime resident of Lafayette, Indiana. My address is six two four North Eighteenth Street. I'm here to ask you to put on hold making the decision. Maybe there could be an exploratory group that really researches this out and, you know, but, or even maybe it could be brought to a referendum and let the voters decide. One of the things that Representative Colleen Gary did, they introduced legislation earlier this year, it's called H D eighteen fifty. It's an act relative to privacy and safety in public accommodations would ensure that people use restrooms and locker room facilities consistent, consistent with their anatomical sex. And the bill reads, "The meaning of gender identity shall be distinct from that of sex and sexual orientation. Access to lawfully sex segregated facilities, accommodations, resorts, and amusements, as well as educational, athletic, and therapeutic activities and programs, shall be controlled by the individual's anatomical sex, of male or female, regardless of that individual's gender identity." This cuts to the chase, and I believe that it's a fair and sensible approach to this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Brian Primo, Cattula Avenue, Lafayette. I wasn't going to speak tonight till it was decided that we should put this up for a vote. Human rights are not a popularity contest. You know, it wasn't that long ago that the majority decided that blacks should not be able to marry whites, and that was a very popular belief for a long time, but it didn't make it right. We need to do what's right, not what we're comfortable with. I'm not terribly comfortable with transgenderism because it's... I'm not terribly comfortable with transgenderism because it's unfamiliar. It's strange. It's not, it's not what I'm used to. Uh, but I'm not willing to enforce my comfort on others to make them miserable. Uh, I'm, I'm willing to endure a few moments of unfamiliarity and discomfort so that somebody else doesn't have to live a tortured life. Thank you.
Hello, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. My name is Ryan McCann, and I'm with the Indiana Family Institute.
Where do you live?
I live, uh, in Westfield, Indiana, but I was asked to testify today by a number of Lafayette citizens. And so, I've come here today in order to testify, as many others have been able to. And we are the state affiliate of...
Be polite.
Last time I checked, the First Amendment was still around, if, if I've read the Constitution correctly. And our organization is the affiliate of Alliance Defending Freedom, who's a national legal group. I just want to tell one story of, uh, we, we've seen a lot of examples of problems with these type of ordinances around the country. I'll just give one example from Ohio, our neighbor. I've, I've seen a lot of other city councils, and I've been a part of those as well, testifying on this issue, so I can tell you other, other stories. But I think the story from Ohio, I think is most apt for Lafayette, especially with the communication we've been having back and forth with bathrooms. It really goes even beyond that when it comes to privacy issues for women. The story in Ohio is there are two young girls who were adopted by a loving family in Ohio. Those are the girls, unfortunately, were sexually abused as children in very, just sad circumstances. They were being raised, uh, by this family in Ohio, went to a public high school. They changed their gender identity policy within the high school. Uh, as you might expect, to have a biological male in the women's locker rooms or showers or, uh, changing facilities at the, at the high school was, was a traumatic experience for these two who were adopted, uh, and, and had severe sexual abuse in their past. And so, the school, uh, changing that policy and allowing, uh, biological males in that restroom, not the transgendered, uh, folks in that community were not really the, the problem. It was folks that identified as male that were even being allowed into the bathrooms, uh, was a significant problem for these, these girls. And not only within the bathrooms, but also when you look at even the ordinance here in Lafayette that you're taking a look at, and the definition of gender identity and the definition of discrimination, you have to look at other issues like men on women's athletic teams, for example, in the high schools, or even field trips that hasn't been addressed here today. But school field trips was a major issue for these two girls. That there was, the, uh, school was supposed to be taking a trip to Washington DC. The girls were willing and able and wanting to attend. However, the school would not allow them, uh, the parents' knowledge if there were biological males that would be staying in the same hotel room with the females or not. They would not give out that information. And unfortunately, when we see this policy change in the schools, which I think we're implementing here today, that, that really becomes the issue, is there's a privacy issue of giving information about transgender students out there in the public. So, that also creates a veil with parents, uh, that have young girls and want to get more information about whether biological males are in the showers or in the locker rooms or on school trips, are going to be on athletic teams. Um, so, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
My name is Lisa Cooper, and I'm a resident in Lafayette. And I just wanted to say that it's not the transgenders that we're afraid of, but those that will take advantage and make it a disadvantage of, um, using that opportunity to do things that are wrong, um, to other children. Can you imagine children going to the bathroom? And like one lady said that, she goes with her children, her grandchildren to the bathroom. I have done that myself. But even in the men's bathroom, when my son was young and he got, he went in there, I stood on the outside door, and then I said, "Is it all clear?" Um, my son didn't answer me. It was taking too long. I was getting concerned because he was five years old, and I said, "I'm going to walk in there" because I wanted to make sure nothing was wrong. But can you imagine a father being concerned of his daughter in the bathroom? And he walks into a women's bathroom, he will have just as much right to check on his daughter. And if he sees someone, if it seems as though their daughter is being hurt, that's opening up a whole nother can of worms where someone may decide to be violent. If they think something is happening to their kids, they don't answer, and it could just be a kid not answering. Um, people have weapons they concealed to carry. Um, I could just see this going into a whole nother perspective. It's not the transgenders that you don't want to be able to use bathrooms. It's just the fact of those that's going to take advantage of it and cause a problem and, uh, someone wanting to kill someone because of the fear of what's going on. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Angela Meek, and I live at 1216 Meadowbrook Drive, Lafayette, Indiana. I have lived in Tippecanoe County all but three years of my wonderful 56 years of life. Um, being raised here, I have lived in Lafayette now 12 and a half years of that life. I served on the parent teacher organization at Glen Acres Elementary School for five years. I have very much embraced children. I served and worked in Lafayette Christian School when our daughter was a student in Lafayette Christian School. I became very, very, very attached to many different children through the years of my service in this community, in the school systems, and through the churches in this community. And I will also say, my heart goes out to the members of the GLBT community, simply because I have family members. I have cousins. I have a cousin who is very successful in that community in the state of Washington. He is very known. His face is on the wall at Jefferson High School in Lafayette, Indiana for his successes. I do not judge him. I am not prejudiced against him or anything that he does or stands for. Where my heart and compassion comes, and my passion comes, is being a survivor of domestic violence, overcoming domestic violence, overcoming rape as a teenager, overcoming date rape, various different abuses like that. So, to this community, my heart pours out to the men and women who have shared their fears of those things. I understand, and I don't often say, "I understand," but I understand. I truly do understand. Every time a loud bang goes, I jump. Every time I hear a gunshot, I jump. But I am not going to run and say, "Ban guns. I was shot." That's how I survived domestic violence. I stand here today saying, it is not, to me, the issue of fair housing or veterans or any of the other aspects of this agenda. It is very simply the restroom. I look at you, gentlemen, and I say, and gosh, this is going to be difficult, "At least I have a stall to go in the restroom to. You don't." I clean the restrooms in our church, and I ask you, standing there, how would you feel about a woman walking in on you in the restroom? No matter what the sexual orientation is, anatomically speaking. I also will say this, my husband and I, yes, we have intimate relationship, but there are barriers in our household. I don't go in the restroom when he is in the restroom and vice versa, and the same for our 18-year-old daughter. We respect each other's privacy. We respect each other's bodies and that. And I will also say, we have neighbors who I love very dearly. These two gentlemen are in a very committed relationship. We let our 18-year-old daughter go to Chicago with her, so there is no fear.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Campbell, my name is Gary Forbes, and I'd like a point of privilege if you would grant it. I don't live in Lafayette. I live in West Lafayette. However, I was...
That was only a request, sir.
No. I was the pastor of Trinity United Methodist Church for eight and a half years. I had transgendered people who were members. They weren't, they weren't, uh, categories that Christians talked about, but I'd never met. I served large United Methodist churches in the state of Indiana, and I had homosexual people who had lived together longer and in a very good relationship than some heterosexual And the other part of the special privileges, I have been referred tonight by several people, although they didn't know that they refer, they were referring to me. I was one of the early presidents of Jim Reilly's Human Relations Committee. And I remember the meeting we had about homosexual rights at the theater just across the street, and it was a very acrimonious meeting. And I don't say this is a threat, but mo, uh, same as the same, some of the same arguments that were used tonight, including, having more time to think about it, were used 20 years ago when that meeting took place. And the issue is not how much time you need. The issue is, you have to make up your mind whether you believe these people are human beings or not. My daughter-in-law brought me to that meeting, and after the meeting was over, I asked one of my Methodist minister friends, uh, if he could take me home because my daughter had left me there without a ride, daughter-in-law. On the way home, I said, "You're pretty hard on homosexuals tonight." He said, "That's right." I said, "Uh, what do you think about divorce?" I knew it would end divorce. I said, "Jesus said a whole lot more about divorce than he did about transgender homosexuality." And I'm simply making, giving you some context. You can extend this. You can take door-to-door experiences, and you'll come out where we came out in that meeting, ma, taking a vote. And by the way, some of the...
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Forbes.
Some of the fears that were expressed then didn't happen, and some of these fears expressed tonight aren't going to happen either.
Thank you.
My name's Douglas Kaiser. I live 3750 McCarty Lane. I'm a father of a daughter and a granddaughter. I'm a veteran, and I believe tonight that this, uh, bill that you're going to vote on, I ask that you would table it. It does not represent the majority of the veterans or the majority of this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Dr. Mark Dutton. Um, been in the ministry for 30 years. I've counseled all kinds of people. And I can tell you right now, the Bible says more about morality than it does about divorce. Again, my doctorate is in the development and, and the administration of counseling. I've counseled people with situations like we're talking about tonight, and I've seen them change. They were born a young man, and we'll be talking medical grounds here. He had gonads and a penis. He's a boy. Girls that were born with vaginas, they're girls, they're women. God determined that. But it was the desire of their heart that led them astray. And if y'all start allowing things for like this with people in that kind of a situation, what are you going to do next? I've counseled people that were after animals. It's called bestiality. You, you, I'm just saying, here's a path here. I would encourage you to stop and think, and wait a minute. What would the people of this community, if we all voted, and by the way, those, some of those people I've counseled, I've seen them change. I have seen them change. One man, he had sex with nine women. He repented, and his wife restored the relationship. The wife was a lesbian. He asked her forgiveness. They ask each other, they restored their relationship. I've seen that. And I, and that's, my point is, I'm willing to help those people. I know what the Bible says about it. I'm not looking down on them and, and spitting on them. If I can help them, I'll help them. I want to help them. I'm not looking and scorning them. But if a man's a man, he needs to go into the male bathroom. And if a woman is a woman, and she is, she needs to go to the female bathroom. And again, I've seen people like this that have these attitudes that totally changed because they started listening to the truth of the Word of God and the authority of God. And someday, every knee shall bow and every tongue will confess that Jesus Christ is Lord to the glory of God the Father. And you all are going to stand and give an account for how you vote. I'm going to stand and give an account for how I counsel people and treat people. I don't scorn these people. I don't want to have nothing to do with you. I'll help them. I've helped them. I've seen people like we've been talking about tonight. I've seen them change totally, their life, 180 degrees. And I'm asking you to consider the fact that we voted for you. How many people in this community, what would be their vote if everybody in this community voted? That's your responsibility to represent our community. And it's not just, again, that, that's not spitting on them and leave us alone.
Thank you very much.
I'm Colleen Bjork, and I wasn't even going to come here tonight because I'm really, don't think I'm on anybody's side, but I feel like...
Where, where is your residence, ma'am?
I live right in Tippecanoe County.
Can you give some address?
4026 Farmington Drive.
Thank you.
And I feel like, uh, we're, we're, we're on the wrong path here. Um, we need to protect the people, and we need to protect all the people. So, either have a bathroom or a locker room or something so that everybody feels safe. And make whatever you need to do to make everybody safe, not just transgender or little kids or people who don't feel safe. Just think about that, and maybe you need to table it until you can feel like you got everybody safe and everybody's happy.
Thank you.
And, uh, preference, I was a preference. Uh, I want to thank everyone who has given opinions tonight. Uh, they are all well-thought-out opinions, and I want to congratulate and thank you for the good behavior, if that's a crit, criteria, that has been presented here. No one has, uh, cast aspersions at other people for what they are or what they tend to believe in, and I want to thank each and every one of you for that. Uh, you have shown what a community can do, uh, from the standpoint of presenting ideas, which are quite honestly hot-button issues, uh, but you have shown a great deal of, uh, for lack of a better word, good behavior. I thank you for that. Now, are we ready for a vote? Are there any questions or comments by members of the common council? There being none, would the clerk then conduct a roll call vote on ordinance 2016 dash six? Aye.
Clanker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alis Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordnance passes eight to zero.
You folks may all be excused because I know that the rest of the meeting will not be as exciting and noteworthy as what we've gone through.
Five minutes. Yeah, go ahead. Go. You bet. Good luck. Good. Thank you.
Where'd, where'd Nargie Reynolds go?
Did that lady take her, uh, microphone? Ma'am, did you get your microphone? Ma'am? Blondie?[1758.13]
You bet. Good, thank you.
Where'd, where'd Nargie Reynolds go?
Did that lady take her, uh, microphone? Ma'am, did you get your microphone? Ma'am? Stop that lady.
I guess I'll stretch my leg.
That's the first time I've heard that today. I don't know, I, I don't vote. I'm not a voting member. I, I'm not vote, I'm not a city councilor.
I don't vote either. I don't vote either.
And I, I'm just a reporter. Yeah. And go back. Yeah, that's funny. Okay. Good, that works. All right. The rest of the group, please. That's very nice. Um, I'm very good. I'm surprised you can, you're not playing. Yeah, there's eyes, maybe you just not sleeping. Oh, no, I know, yeah, I don't have. Okay, there's Downing. There's Terry. If I may have your attention, we will start the rest of the meeting and finish with the
city's business. Okay, go ahead.
Two thousand fifteen dash twenty. An amendment to ordinance two thousand ten dash eleven establishing a local St. Mary's Hill Historic District in the city of Lafayette, Indiana.
This, uh, I'll give a little preface here that, uh, we will consider each of these individually and vote on them individually, but they will all be discussed as one unit. All of the re- the rezoning of these, uh, and make them into historic districts. Is that agreeable to everyone? See a lot of the people nodding their heads. Okay, if the clerk then would, you just introduce that one. Mr. Reynolds?
I move, move to hear and approve ordinance twenty sixteen dash twenty. Next twenty, not inside.
And, Mr. Clinker?
Second.
Discussion about that, oh, you, remember, it's the whole thing.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yes, Senator Carson, Economic Development Director for the city of Lafayette, representing the Historic Preservation Commission. As you said, President Campbell, the next six resolutions are all related. There are petitions to be in local historic district. Um, again, this is for the second reading, and these are all voluntary posi- petitions. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Carson? Thank you very much. The audience, any questions or comments about the historic districts in general? Ms. Mark?
Susan Schecter, one zero zero one Ferry Street. I just want to, uh, ask a question. Does this mean that as part of a historic district, the, um, these properties will need to, um, respect certain rules with regards to improvements or-
Definitely.
Yes.
Yes.
The whole point, yeah.
And they, they, um, even if that's more expensive, they'll need to take the recommendation of the historic commission?
They cannot, uh, change things unless they follow the rules of that particular commission.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
And I would add that they're all voluntary, uh, requests to be in those districts.
Any other comments? Okay, uh, let's vote on this particular, uh-
Two thousand sixteen dash twenty. Mr. Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alvis Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Or just two thousand sixteen dash twenty-one. An amendment to ordinance two thousand ten dash eleven establishing a local St. Mary's one thousand eight South Street Historic District in the city of Lafayette, Indiana.
Mr. Brown?
Mrs. Williamson?
Second.
Discussion by members of the common council. Members of the audience. You don't want Mr. Carson to go up yet, okay? Good enough. Any questions or comments by members of the audience? There being none, would the clerk then conduct a roll call vote on ordinance two thousand sixteen dash twenty-one?
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alvis Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Or just two thousand sixteen dash twenty-four. An amendment to ordinance two thousand ten dash eleven establishing a local legal height four twenty Lingle Avenue Historic District in the city of Lafayette, Indiana.
Mrs. Halsmeyer?
Mr. President, I move that we hear and approve ordinance two thousand sixteen dash twenty-two.
Mr. Downey?
Second.
Discussion by members of the common council. Members of the audience. There being none, would the clerk then conduct a roll call vote on ordinance two thousand sixteen dash twenty-one?
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alvis Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Or just two thousand sixteen dash twenty-four. An amendment to ordinance two thousand ten dash eleven establishing a local legal height five oh five South Street Historic District in the city of Lafayette, Indiana.
Mrs. Halsmeyer?
Mr. President, I move that we hear and approve ordinance two thousand sixteen dash twenty-two.
Mr. Downey?
Second.
Discussion by members of the common council. Members of the audience. Would the clerk then conduct a roll call vote? Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alvis Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Or just two thousand sixteen dash twenty-one. An amendment to ordinance two thousand ten dash eleven establishing a local legal height four twenty Lingle Avenue Historic District in the city of Lafayette, Indiana.
Mrs. Halsmeyer?
Mr. President, I move that we hear and approve ordinance two thousand sixteen dash twenty-two.
Mr. Downey?
Second.
Discussion by members of the common council. Members of the audience. There being none, would the clerk then conduct a roll call vote on ordinance two thousand sixteen dash twenty-one?
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alvis Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Or just two thousand sixteen dash twenty-four. An amendment to ordinance two thousand ten dash eleven establishing a local legal height four twenty Lingle Avenue Historic District in the city of Lafayette, Indiana.
Mrs. Halsmeyer?
Mr. President, I move that we hear and approve ordinance two thousand sixteen dash twenty-two.
Mr. Downey?
Second.
Discussion by members of the common council. Members of the audience. There being none, would the clerk then conduct a roll call vote on ordinance two thousand sixteen dash twenty-one?
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alvis Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Or just two thousand sixteen dash twenty-four. An amendment to ordinance two thousand ten dash eleven establishing a local legal height four sixty South Street Historic District in the city of Lafayette, Indiana.
Mr. Brown?
Mrs. Williamson?
Second.
Discussion by members of the common council. Members of the audience. You don't want Mr. Carson to go up yet, okay? Good enough. Any questions or comments by members of the audience? There being none, would the clerk then conduct a roll call vote on ordinance two thousand sixteen dash twenty-one?
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alvis Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Or just two thousand sixteen dash twenty-four. An amendment to ordinance two thousand ten dash eleven establishing a local legal height five oh five South Street Historic District in the city of Lafayette, Indiana.
Mrs. Halsmeyer?
Mr. President, I move that we hear and approve ordinance two thousand sixteen dash twenty-two.
Mr. Downey?
Second.
Discussion by members of the common council. Members of the audience. There being none, would the clerk then conduct a roll call vote on ordinance two thousand sixteen dash twenty-one?
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alvis Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Or just two thousand sixteen dash twenty-four. An amendment to ordinance two thousand ten dash eleven establishing a local legal height five oh five South Street Historic District in the city of Lafayette, Indiana.
Mrs. Halsmeyer?
Mr. President, I move that we hear and approve ordinance two thousand sixteen dash twenty-two.
Mr. Downey?
Second.
Discussion by members of the common council. Members of the audience. There being none, would the clerk then conduct a roll call vote on ordinance two thousand sixteen dash twenty-one?
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alvis Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Or just two thousand sixteen dash twenty-four. An amendment to ordinance two thousand ten dash eleven establishing a local legal height four sixty South Street Historic District in the city of Lafayette, Indiana.
Mrs. Williamson?
I move for passage of ordinance two thousand sixteen dash twenty-three. I'm-
Halsmeyer?
Second.
Any questions or comments by members of the common council? Members of the audience. Would the clerk then conduct a roll call vote?
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alvis Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Or just two thousand sixteen dash twenty-four. An amendment to ordinance two thousand ten dash eleven establishing a local legal height five oh five South Street Historic District in the city of Lafayette, Indiana.
Mrs. Williamson?
I move for passage of ordinance two thousand sixteen dash twenty-three.
Halsmeyer?
Second.
Any questions or comments by members of the common council? Members of the audience. Would the clerk then conduct a roll call vote?
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alvis Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Or just two thousand sixteen dash twenty-four. An amendment to ordinance two thousand ten dash eleven establishing a local legal height five oh five South Street Historic District in the city of Lafayette, Indiana.
Mr. Clinker?
I move to pass ordinance two thousand sixteen dash twenty-four on second read.
Mr. Heidi?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Members of the audience. Would the clerk then conduct a roll call vote?
Mr. Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Alvis Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Or just two thousand sixteen dash twenty-four. An amendment to ordinance two thousand ten dash eleven establishing a local legal height five thirty-eight South Street Historic District in the city of Lafayette, Indiana.
Mr. Reynolds?
Move to hear and approve twenty sixteen dash twenty-five.
Mrs. Nargie?
Second.
Comments by members of the council? Members of the audience. Would the clerk then conduct a roll call vote?
Mr. Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Alvis Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Or just two thousand sixteen dash twenty-four.
Thank you.
Or just two thousand sixteen dash twenty-five. An amendment to ordinance two thousand ten dash eleven establishing a local legal height five thirty-eight South Street Historic District in the city of Lafayette, Indiana.
Mr. Reynolds?
Move to hear and approve twenty sixteen dash twenty-five.
Mrs. Nargie?
Second.
Comments by members of the council? Members of the audience. Would the clerk then conduct the roll call vote?
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alvis Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Or just two thousand sixteen dash twenty-four.
Thank you.
Or just two thousand sixteen dash seventeen. An amendment to amend zoning ordinance at Fifteenth County, Indiana, to rezone certain real states from R two U to R three U for a board of six representatives. The Methodist Church is-
Mrs. Halsmeyer?
Mr. President, I move we hear and consider ordinance two thousand sixteen dash seventeen.
Mr. Brown? Questions or comments by members of the common council? There being none, is there a representative here to speak about this particular ordinance?
Glaring it be. Uh-
I don't glare anymore.
I left that, I left that when I got out of the school business. Uh, I'm here on behalf of the Trinity United Methodist Church to, uh, address their, uh, rezoning petition to change their property from being zoned R two U to R three U. Uh, this, uh, proposal comes with the unanimous recommendation of all the members of the area plan commission who were in attendance at the meeting. It was twelve to nothing. Uh, in seeking to be good stewards of their property, uh, in, in downtown Lafayette, uh, the church is, uh, seeking to, and has sought in the past, to, uh, partner with, uh, another local community agency. Uh, in particular, there, there were talks with the Bauer Head Start Group. Those talks, at least for the moment, have not, uh, have not resulted in an agreement. Uh, but, uh, what the church is looking to do here is be prepared for a community partnership to put that building to good use. Uh, the, it initially started because in an R two U zoning, you cannot have a childcare center.
There being none, is there a representative here to speak about this particular ordinance?
Clearing it be. Uh.
I don't glare anymore.
No, I'm sorry.
I left that, I left that when I got out of the school business.
Uh, I'm here on behalf of the Trinity United Methodist Church to address their rezoning petition to change their property from being zoned R two U to R three U. This proposal comes with the unanimous recommendation of all the members of the area plan commission who were in attendance at the meeting of twelve to nothing. In seeking to be good stewards of their property in downtown Lafayette, the church is seeking to and has sought in the past to partner with another local community agency. In particular, there were talks with the Bauer Head Start group, those talks, at least for the moment, have not resulted in an agreement. But what the church is looking to do here is be prepared for a community partnership to put that building to good use. It initially started because in an R two U zoning, you cannot have a childcare center. In an R three U zoning, you can have a childcare center by special exception. So, the discussion started towards an R three U zoning for that purpose. Initially, the church began speaking with the neighborhood and instead of pursuing a commercial zoning like a general business downtown, a commercial business or neighborhood business zoning, the neighborhood indicated that they would be more comfortable and would prefer if the church would pursue an R three U zoning, simply because it limits the intensity of the use on the property while still accomplishing the goal that we're looking for. Even though the partnership with Bauer has not worked out yet, the church wants to be prepared for the next time a church, a community partner is ready to use this building. The church is seeking to be good stewards of the property, put it to use rather than let it go unused as it has for quite some time. The church's congregation has gotten smaller over the years and so there's not as great a need for a building like this. The services that were once housed there are now housed in the main church building. So, they seek to be good stewards of the property, put it to good use and they're pursuing this petition and continuing this petition because, number one, we've come quite a ways already and rather than putting that effort to waste and having to come do it all over again the next time a community partner becomes apparent for this facility, they want to be ready to go as soon as that community partner arises. I'll note, and I'll be as brief as I can, I understand that we've been here for a while tonight. R three U is not out of character for this area. In fact, only about two years ago, this property was zoned commercial business, it was zoned CB. So, there's nothing earth shattering about this. In fact, this is much gentler than a CB zoning was only two years ago. And then, only a couple hundred feet away, we have commercial businesses zoning. That's tangential to the main church building itself. So, just a couple hundred feet away, you have CB zoning. Catty corner on that, on the southeast corner of Sixth and North, you have an R three U zoning immediately adjacent to the church, like I mentioned, is commercial business. The corner of Brown and Sixth, there's neighborhood business, a more intense use than R three U. On the opposite corner of this block, there's also R three U and across the street is another church in the parking lot. So, there's nothing that's particularly groundbreaking or paradigm shifting about this rezoning. It's purely utilitarian to help the church accomplish their goals. If the council has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any questions, gentlemen?
Yes, I have one. I received a letter from a lady and she had, we are supportive of the use with commitments to protect the neighborhood. However, their plan has fallen through and the church refused to provide the commitments. What was she addressing there?
So, at one point, there was discussion about adding a commitment to the building. The commitment that was discussed simply takes away too much, takes away too much flexibility from the church in able to, in order to partner with various community agency partners. So, for example, it proposed commitment so that it would be limited to only being used for a Head Start program or childcare program would limit us from having an adult daycare center at the facility or having a library or having any of the other things that are permitted in an R three U zoning. So, and even with that commitment, the R two U zoning and R three U zoning aren't so very different in the type of building that you would expect to see there. An R three U zoning permits forty percent of the building to cover the lot, forty percent of the lot to be covered by building, whereas R two U is only thirty-five. Their building height limitations are exactly the same, they're both thirty-five feet. The green space requirements are about the same, I think it's the forty and thirty-five percent again. So, the changes between the two are not so drastic that a commitment is warranted here.
What about the number of residents who can live in the building if they choose not to use it as a community center of some type?
Sure. The, as a practical matter, there would be, just with the, with the construction of the building being very difficult to manipulate, let alone knock down, I mean, it would be virtually, it would be very challenging to even knock down. But yes, it would increase the number of people who could be housed in that building if it were drastically remodeled on the interior to house people instead of to function as offices or classrooms. That would go up, but the actual footprint of the building would have to, in order for that to change, there would have to be some significant variances.
Including historic preservation, right?
I don't know that we're part of a historic neighborhood, right? Okay, we are part of a historic neighborhood now, so we would have to go through that process as well. I think the church is also pursuing some grants for money to help with the restoration and maintenance of the building and so that would involve some designation or could involve some designation as a historical site as well. And it is, I mean, the building has been around since nineteen fifty-seven, I think Norma can correct me if I'm mistaken. And this is the oldest church in Tippecanoe County. So, they're not a Johnny come lately, they're not, you know, a fly by night organization. This is an organization that has stood the test of time.
What about parking? You got enough parking spots for everything, if you have a daycare or apartments or whatever you're going to put in there?
Yes, the petition is to rezone the building itself and then the three lots surrounding it. It's actually three or six, depending on whether you're looking at. That doesn't matter.
Three or six what?
Three or six lots, it depends on what division you're looking at. But there is quite a lot of parking that for every day but Sunday goes mostly unused and then on Sunday, obviously, it's more intensely used. So, there is ample parking there for a childcare center. Or whatever use may, may come of the building.
I think there are several people that express concern about if another entity would go into that building, but I think knowing that perhaps they're part of the historic district and would be subject to the parameters of the historic district, I think that's what they're concerned about.
I don't, I don't believe it is, but Mr. Carson would know better. He's got those maps in the back of his head.
The Centennial Neighborhood where this property is located is in the National Register Historic District, but it's not in a local historic district. So, the Historic Preservation Commission that we oversee here in Lafayette would not have jurisdiction over any changes to this property. And the National Register doesn't have any of those kind of requirements as well. So, there would not, we would have no jurisdiction over that.
Any other questions or comments? Anyone? Anyone in the audience wish to address this particular rezon?
Hello, my name's Elizabeth Mark, I live at six forty-four North Seventh Street. I also own six fifty-seven North Seventh Street. Both of my homes, by the way, are under the Historic Preservation Commission. They are some of the few in Centennial that are. We started discussions in the spring with the church. They came to us, we discussed doing R three U for Head Start with commitments. We were promised commitments. I have emails, I can dig them out of my iPhone where the attorney said specifically that they were willing to do a commitment. I even have a copy of the commitment on my email. The commitment was to not develop beyond the R three U standard. R three U also allows, you know, not only larger buildings, but more develop, you know, more people per unit, that kind of thing that is against the neighborhood plan. We thought we had this agreed to, found out, I think it was the day before the area plan commission meeting. By the way, area plan commission staff recommended denial for this. Area Plan Commission approved it because they thought a Head Start was going in there. Our area plan commission was told, we gotta get this done tonight because we gotta get this done for the fall. Then they tabled it last month. We've had very little communication, I think I heard last week, the church was moving forward anyway. I have a list, I went through the zoning ordinance, the only things they can do there are adult daycare, childcare, libraries, he did mention those. There's no reason to move forward on this zoning request tonight. They don't have any plans. We all know that they can put in apartments there. There's no reason for them to rezone all three lots in addition to the building. They have no plans. So, I ask that you either table this and they come back when they have a plan, or that you vote no. Thank you.
Tracy Leslie, I reside at thirty-five hundred, I know, same problem as last time, thirty-five hundred Mulberry Drive in Lafayette. I serve as the senior pastor of Trinity United Methodist Church. As you've already heard and are aware, Trinity's initial request for the rezon was to accommodate the Head Start facility in our education building. That was the impetus for the initial request. Since our appearance before the area plan commission, we were unable within an appropriate timeframe to reach a mutually beneficial agreement with the Bauer Center. However, Trinity would like to proceed with the rezon. As previously indicated to the area plan commission, our congregation is not nearly as large as it was in the nineteen fifties when the education building was built. Today, the square footage of the building is not necessary for ministry space and the resources necessary for responsible stewardship of the building create a financial stress for the congregation. We feel it is necessary as good stewards of the church's resources to repurpose the building as we would not want it to be neglected and negatively impact the appearance of the neighborhood. We wish to respect the architectural integrity of the neighborhood. We have a strong commitment to the neighborhood. Brick repair is scheduled to begin on the north street side of our church building and we're in the process of applying for a DNR grant to assist with additional brick work to the second side of our historic church building. The church building is our primary ministry site. We're blessed with a beautiful church structure that enhances the community and we are committed to its maintenance, although this is a significant expense. A change to R three zoning for the education building would not jeopardize the community's architectural integrity. It would however allow the church to explore options for the building that would be mutually beneficial to the church and the surrounding neighborhood. This request for zoning change reflects the church's current financial reality and desire to be wise stewards and good neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, council members.
I figured you, ma'am.
A little. Thank you, council, for listening to the homeowners in the neighborhood. Bill Bray, five eleven North Seventh. Ten years ago, I rehabbed a home there and I'm working on the one next door to be my future home. Also served on a commission or a planning committee funded by this body and adopted by this body that was our neighborhood master plan. And that's what we're asking for is what's the plan for this property and without a plan, we do ask that you either table this or vote no. Thank you.
Yep.
My name is Norma Jean Singley. I live at thirty-three twenty-two East Two Hundred North. You won't hold that against me. I'm the chairperson of the trustees of Trinity Church and the trustees are responsible for the maintenance of the property. Now, the education building that's before you tonight for rezoning was a very vibrant building. It housed Sunday School classes, there were meeting rooms, it was a very active building. Through time, those things have changed and the only thing that is in that building now is our church offices. Several years ago, we did a major renovation in the church and so that further moved those activities into the church building. So, we have this, this building primarily empty except for our church offices and the expense of managing that building continues as though it was fully occupied. As Pastor Tracy pointed out, we are certainly aware of the importance of the historical significance of that church and we want to maintain it for the integrity of that particular area. And we are going to start this extensive tuck pointing that will maintain that building. And we were very disappointed too that it did not work out with Bauer. We could not meet their timetable because they needed to, they would be starting now and we simply would not have the process completed. That door is not completely closed, but it, at least for the time being, it is not an option. So, we feel that the R three U would allow us to still pursue the best option for making full use of that building and still be a compliment to the community. So, we would appreciate your consideration. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Hello. Hello, my name is Stuart Freskis. I live at four twenty-one Brown Street. I also own four nineteen Brown Street and four fifteen Brown Street. What I have heard is the church is trying to sell this, I think, there's a lot of action words. We need to move fast, we need to, you know, move on our opportunities and stuff like that. I, I don't see why, without a plan, and the thing is that they want to move fast, but they, they're also saying, trust us, we'll, you know, make the right decision. I, I think that unless, it's much better if the, this is put off until they do have a plan and then the community and the neighborhood can see what it is that will be built there rather than saying, trust us, and then changing the zoning and then maybe the neighborhood experiences a surprise later. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Good evening, Ken McCannan, six thirteen Perrin Avenue, though I am president of the Historic Centennial Neighbors, Neighborhood Association. We were approached back in the wintertime about this project with the Bauer Head Start program entering the building, taking, making use of the building. We had some good discussions with the board members and the church representatives and we wholeheartedly embraced this idea. I mean, it's an educational building, we thought it was great to bring it back to that. We had further discussions where we came up with an agreement that we would approve it with commitment, not to do anything other than what they said they were going to do without review of the Neighborhood Association. We didn't say they couldn't do anything else, we just wanted to be aware of what was happening if there was a change. We were informed, I believe it was the day of the area plan commission meeting, that they were not going, that the board had voted not to go with the commitment language. And there was nothing we could do at the time because we were kind of blindsided by it. And I might say that the same board was offered a financial commitment to use a portion of the education building over the winter months last year and they declined to enter into that agreement. So, our fear is, and I think most of you know, that our neighborhood has fought big box apartment development in the past. Fortunately, we've been successful in keeping them out. That's our major fear here, that something could happen. We spent literally hundreds of hours on the neighborhood plan, which is, has been, has been put into place and now the form based code is being added on top of that. That may offer some protection, but we just don't know. And there's just too many uncertainties for the neighborhood members to be comfortable in supporting this, so we'd ask that you at least table or deny this. Thank you very much.
My name is Kay Connor. I live at five oh one North Fifth Street, about a block away from this piece of property we're talking about. We don't have a picture of it here, which we did at the APC, but whoops, it says it's half of a block. The education building is here, there's a parking lot here and all the rest is parking. And I asked at the APC meeting, why does the whole thing have to be, why can't they just do the building and the parking lot adjacent to the building is R two, R three U and leave the other part as R two U to give us more comfort? And apparently, there's no reason why that can't be done, but it was, it was already in the works then, they would have had to do it right now. But so, if we could delay it, not only until the form based code, which is imminent, is done and then consider not having the whole property be R three U, I think if it could be delayed until that was determined, that would be something that would make the neighborhood more comfortable. Thank you.
Any other comments? There's been quite a, I guess a request to postpone this particular ordinance and I would bow to the city attorney, we are restricted by law.
Well, your options are to either vote yes, vote no, or the petitioner could withdraw the ordinance. But if you postpone it, it's gonna, within ninety days after it was certified, it's gonna be passed. So, you're, the postponement's really not an option unless you're, I mean, if you're gonna allow it to be passed by default, that, I guess that's an option. But it has to be either voted on today or, or I think the petitioner could withdraw it. If it's denied, I believe, Jason, you can't refile for a year. But if you withdraw it, I think you could start that process up again. Mr. Teeter, you're another expert in the zoning area. That's already there, yeah. No, we're, yeah, I think the next meeting would be the ninety days. Yeah. Yeah. It's, it's close enough, I mean, I think that the, you know, the better policy, I mean, I'm not sure what can happen in, you know, in the, in the next thirty days, you run the risk of having it pass if you're concerned about that. So, my recommendation is that you take a vote today or the petitioner withdraws it.
I have a question. Part of the reason that maybe it fell through with Bauer, was it because this kind of proceeding wasn't done? We had to have the zoning, you know, did this, not having this rezon in a timely manner sort of mess up the deal?
That's part of the concern here and part of why the, really, the entire purpose for why the church wants to proceed at this point is because the part of, and I don't, I can't say for certain all of the reasons or exactly why things didn't work out with Bauer and maybe, maybe Norma could, but it was at least partially related to the fact that after we got approval for the rezoning, we would then have to go back and apply for a special exception to operate a childcare center there as well. So, then you have a filing deadline and then you have the actual hearing that you have to wait for there. So, really, the primary purpose right now is because we've come so far already that at the point at which it became clear that things weren't working out with Bauer this time around, the church has, has time and money invested into this process already and by continuing with the process is going to be set up in a position where the next time a community partner becomes available, instead of having to apply for a rezoning and then apply for a special exception after the rezoning is passed by the city council, then next time, all we'll have to do is go and apply for a special exception. So that in that event, you have a latency period of forty-five days or so instead of ninety to...
Are you trying to be a little more proactive as far as having this property, being able to put it to good use?
It's gonna enable the church to be much more agile in the, in the ultimate use that that building is put to.
Yes. I took a look at the certification, so the ninety days would expire on October twentieth, so you're, you would be able to continue it one more time and vote it up or down.
Mr. Chairman.
Is this September, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, in the right month.
We have a meeting scheduled on October the sixth, a budget meeting. Would it be appropriate at that time to consider this particular ordinance or would you rather not muddy the waters with other?
When's the, when's the next, October fourth is our next city council meeting.
And that would fall within the days of requirement?
Mr. President, I have a question for Mr. Chasnick because if this fails, they could come back with the PD and redo the whole thing, correct? And so, basically, the restrictions of what they're doing here, if they come back with the PD, is gonna open the, open pretty much whatever they want to do, correct?
Uh, it... Sure.
Or, if we just say...
With a regular meeting.
If it goes to the regular meeting on October fourth. I was wrong.
Mr. Reynolds, if I might address your question. It was pointed out by several members of the area plan commission, well, not, two members of the area plan commission, that an R three U is not actually that lucrative to a property developer anyway. And most of the property developers, you're correct, are pursuing plan developments
Sure.
rather than building by right in an R three U zone. So, the lucrativeness of an R three zoning for, R three U zoning, rezoning for a hypothetical sale to a developer, it just isn't...
Right, so it really restricts it more than coming back to where they do a plan development and then they can do a lot of things under a plan development.
Under a plan development, a lot, a lot more things are on the table, yes.
Right, okay, that's why I, I thought that was it. Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Chasnick.
Okay.
If it's an educational building now and this is voted down and it stays R two U, isn't the daycare and the educational building close enough, if you call it like day school or something, that it's...
Just because it's logical doesn't mean it's gonna work. So, I mean, it, they're...
Darn me, logic.
You know, there, there are some of those restrictions that are, you know, that are pretty specific and I believe that, you know, I'm not, I'm not sure why it wouldn't, but obviously, it requires... but obviously, it requires R3 zoning, or it could, could you do it, is this a daycare or a school?
Well, the flex, so it's, the church calls it the education building, it was used for Sunday school and things like that. So, that's the name that they've used for it. Churches get a lot more leeway when it comes to zoning laws than, for example, a third-party agency like Bauer, or like any other community nonprofit who might make use of this space. But the, so, if the church went and tried to do it, my understanding is that the church could operate its own daycare, but a community partner operating the daycare has to, has to abide by the zoning code, right?
How long has it been zoned R2U, for a long time, or just recently?
No, my recollection is that it was rezoned in two thousand fourteen.
Was it general business prior to that?
It was commercial, let's see, it was-
Commercial, okay.
Central business, I'm sorry, yes, that's true, central business, so it was a downtown.
So, when you went from that to the R2U, became much more restrictive?
Yes, and in fact-
So, that was really good for the neighborhood when you did that?
And, and that was not at the church's behest, that was, I think, initiated by the area plan commission as part of their, their looking at the neighborhood plan. Yes, yeah, the church is actively looking for community partners to utilize this organization. There have been discussions with at least one community partner after it became clear that Bauer wasn't working out. It sounds like that, that discussion is not going to result in a, in a partnership. But the discussions are ongoing, and the seeking is, the church is actively seeking a partner.
My question is, we heard from residents that stated they have conversations with the church about commitments being promised when it was thought to be head start. When that fell through, why did we pull the commitments from the table?
There, there's a, there's a difference in recollection, a difference of opinion as to what happened. The correspondence, from my perspective, and I wasn't involved at this phase when the initial correspondence happened, but the initial correspondence was along the lines of, we want to rezon this property, and the neighborhood association came back and said, we would like you to use R3U instead of something like NB or GB, something much more use, that allows more intensive uses, and we want the liquor store there or anything like that. But, at, at one point, there was consideration of a commitment, and a commitment was drafted. It was sent to the neighborhood association, not offered as in, as in, we're going to do this, but would you, what would you think of it if we did this? The neighborhood didn't respond to us for at least a week. And at that point, we had to make a decision to go forward. And frankly, with the neighborhood's lack of cooperation on that, we, we don't feel it's fair to the church to be, to be beholden to the neighborhood association for the next time a community partner comes around, and maybe they are okay with a childcare center, but not okay with an adult daycare center, or something like that.
And one of the residents had stated that there were commitments to it being R3U, and you just said the same thing, so that was your understanding?
I'm, I'm not sure I understand your question.
That she had emails that said, they, you were, the commitment was to make it R3U.
There was a discussion start, well, that it would be, that the development would be limited to an even tighter restriction than R3U. But R3U's restrictions are, are so tight to begin with, and, and so locationally appropriate to this downtown-adjacent property, that we just don't think a commitment should be necessary for this property. And it was-
Against a general commitment, like for educational purposes, or daycare purposes? Just kind of a sweeping commitment? Like he said, they're afraid of big box apartments, so is there-
I, I, I think that that fear would be more founded if we were pursuing a planned development. An R3U just isn't going to accommodate a big box development, the building can't be any taller than thirty-five feet without a variance, can't cover more than forty percent of the property. So, that, that's not a, that's not a risk that we feel should justify a commitment.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, sir, I think you've got three choices.
Sure.
Yes, no, or October the-
Well, well, then I choose yes.
Fourth.
I, I don't get to vote, though, do I? Can I, can I momentarily confer with my client?
Sure.
If I may again, I would just like to point out that he said, without a variance. It's always ways to change things down the road.
Mr. Chairman, the petitioner is not inclined to table their petition at this time. We, we'd like to proceed with a vote, please.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the council members? Go ahead.
No.
No.
Nargie?
Yes.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Alwes Meyer?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Downey?
No.
You got it, okay.
Thank you. Moving on, go ahead. Which one was that?
Yes, sir, you've waited, yeah.
Thank you. As long as you'll make me happy, too, I want to go down to Ed's place and everything free for a long time. For the record, Dan Teeter, represent the petitioner on this. We withdrew it because we did, we thought we were gonna have all the facts necessary to proceed as far as the engineering and the cost of the project. So that's why we had proceeded through area plan commission. After that, we found out that we had some negative cost factors dealing with the west side of the property. So we withdrew it, we're going to refile it, and have the petition will be for only the east side of the property. That should be coming before you the next thirty to sixty days. Thank you.
For your patience. Do we have to take a vote on that, sir?
I think you can just acknowledge that the petitioner's withdrawing it, and he's acknowledged it on the records, I don't think you have to vote on that.
Do you folks acknowledge that?
Yep.
Yes. I do.
Aye. I acknowledge.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I move to hear and approve ordinance two thousand sixteen dash twenty-six on first reading.
Thank you. Any questions or comments by members of the common council? I'm glaring again.
I'm not sure I introduced myself the first time, I'm Jason Ramsland, I'm from the law firm Bald Eggleston. I'm here, at least at, for this part of the evening, playing the part of Joe Bumbleburg.
Got a scrunch down.
Yeah, right, a little bit.
Yeah.
Make my voice a little more gravelly. The Lafayette Transitional Housing Center is seeking to rezon most of the block from NBU, a mixture of NBU and R3U to MRU. This is part of the first step in a plan to provide improved services by building a new engagement center for the Lafayette Transitional Housing Center. In addition to meeting the basic needs like housing, this engagement center is also going to provide other, provide for other basic needs like limited medical services, employment skills and life skills training, meals, case management, other supportive services. And would have forty units of supportive housing for singles and couples. Essentially, rezoning the property to build a new building to accomplish Lafayette Transitional Housing's mission. Before they launch into fundraising campaigns, and in particular, application for a grant, part of the application process is that they have to have this step behind them, so that's why they're here first, is putting the first step first. The area plan staff indicated that rather than proceeding with the existing pattern of a mixture of R3U and NBU, this rezon to MRU actually provides better protection for the neighborhood. And then, incidentally, makes it easier to accomplish Lafayette Transitional Housing's development needs. And this also passed unanimously from the area plan commission. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer, otherwise, we have some other folks here who can answer your questions perhaps better than I can.
Don't say that, you might get paid.
New glare.
Any comments by members of the common council of this gentleman? Anybody in the audience wish to address this ordinance? There being none, with the clerk then conduct a roll call vote, please.
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alwes Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Heidi? Move to here, ordinance number two thousand sixteen dash twenty-seven. Mr. Clinker?
Second.
Good evening again, for the record, Dan Teeter, attorney-at-writer, Peter Schreier, represent the petitioner. We also received a favorable staff report on this matter, and a fifteen yes to zero no vote from the area plan commission in favor of it as well. You're aware is where the property is located, on Old Two Thirty-One and County Road Two Fifty, it's on the corner. All the surrounding property is zone residential, except for the church to the north. We plan on keeping it, a single-family, the two lots that are there. However, those two lots have their entrance off of Old Two Thirty-One, we plan on moving that to the Ever County Road, which according to the engineer is what they would prefer to. I would submit to you that I think residential's the proper zone for this. As really a housekeeping matter, we would respectfully request your approval, be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Teeter? Where does the name Golden Paws come from?
Mr. White could not be here tonight, I'll let him explain that to you the next time you see him.
We don't know where he came up with it.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions by members of the audience? There being none, with the clerk then conduct a roll call vote, please.
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker? Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alwes Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downey? Aye.
Thank you. Ms. Nargie?
I, I say we hear and approve ordinance two thousand sixteen dash twenty-eight.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds, second. Any questions or comments by members of the common council? Mayor?
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen, it's gonna be one of your easiest ones of the night, and I'm gonna keep it very quick. We passed a resolution earlier this year, after we finished contract negotiations with the Lafayette Fire Department, as part of those negotiations, the specialty pay, first specialty is five hundred dollars a year, the second specialty was two hundred and fifty dollars a year. We raised that second specialty to five hundred dollars a year also, to give them a bump in being a part of two specialties. So that was approved in that earlier contract, but because there's a financial component to it, we needed to pass this resolution.
Does this require a public hearing, or?
No.
Or, okay?
Nope.
Okay, very good. Any questions for the mayor? Thank you, mayor. Any members of the audience wish to address this resolution, or ordinance, excuse me? There being none, with the clerk then conduct a roll call vote, please.
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alwes Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downey?
Thank you. Mr. Bailey?
I move to approve ordinance two thousand sixteen dash twenty-nine.
Mrs. Williamson?
Second.
Questions or comments by members of the common council? Yes, sir.
This is Carson, economic and development director, again, representing the historic preservation commission. I hope that these next two ordinances are easy as well. These are very similar to the, the previous set that you passed tonight, establishing a local historic district. This one, again, is, is one that is opting in voluntarily into this process at the address of Five Thirty-Five South Seventh Street of the Lingle Heights area. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Carson? Thank you, Mr. Carson.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments by members of the audience? There being none, with the clerk then conduct a roll call vote, please.
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alwes Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Thank you. It's a pleasure, the council, Mr. Reynolds?
I move to hear and approve twenty sixteen dash thirty.
I second it.
Ms. Nargie? Carson?
And again, this is another opt-in voluntary petition for it to be a local historic district. Again, this address is Five Twelve South Seventh Street in Lingle Heights Local Historic District. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. Carson? There being none, thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions by members of the audience? There being none, with the clerk then conduct a roll call vote, please.
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alwes Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Thank you. Good, let's go. It's a pleasure, the council, Mr. Clinker?
Move to here, resolution twenty sixteen dash sixteen.
Heidi?
Second.
Any questions or comments prior to the mayor's? Yes, sir.
This is the confirming resolution for the Caterpillar Logistics Project. As you know, Ambrose is the third-party LLC that's developing the building and the project for the new Caterpillar Logistics Program that we passed last month. This is a really important piece for Caterpillar itself. As you know, we worked together to put that deal to help keep Caterpillar as viable as possible in the global economy. And that Caterpillar Logistics Plant could have went anywhere, it didn't have to stay here in the community, but we were able to work it out. So it did keep those jobs, and also helped the Caterpillar Plant be more profitable. So we have representatives here from Caterpillar that can speak to this resolution. And the next one, I thought I'd just kind of speak to both of them here at the same time to keep us moving, but this is the same project we talked about last month, and has already been through the redevelopment commission with their approval.
I agree, any questions of the mayor? Well, let's get those folks up here from Caterpillar, we don't want to disappoint them.
Good evening, my name is Jokers Fennelli, I'm actually with Ernst &amp; Young, representing Caterpillar. We do have here Richard Gellino, who actually operates and manages the Caterpillar Logistics Facility, which this is, and Zach Weinstein from our E&amp;Y office as well. The echo of the mayor's-
Stand up so we can see you, good, thank you very much. There, oh, we got two, good.
That's two, yes. Back to the mayor's comments, we've been working on this for a while, and it's coming to fruition as we see. As we mentioned, it is gonna keep, Caterpillar does plan on keeping the facility here. It is a facility that we consider the logistics facility, which actually supplies what you know as the Caterpillar Manufacturing Facility. As I said at the last meeting, I'll suspend on giving the summary of Caterpillar, because you all know who they are and what they do. But we are here tonight seeking for your approval, so that this project can move forward, and we hope to start this week with your approval.
Thank you, thank you, very well done, brevity. Any questions or comments by members of the audience? There being none, with the clerk then conduct a roll call vote.
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Alwes Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
Aldrich Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Or just pass the eight to zero.
Thank you.
Resolution two thousand sixteen dash fourteen, a resolution recommending approval of an application by Caterpillar Logistics for property tax abatement in an economic revitalization area, Caterpillar's personal property.
Mr. Brown?
Mr. President, I move, we pass the resolution, that we hear resolution two thousand sixteen dash fourteen.
Second.
Any comments or questions by members of the common council? There being none, anyone in the audience wish to address this particular resolution? There being none, would the clerk then conduct a roll call vote?
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Aldrich Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Resolution passes eight to zero.
Thank you.
Resolution two thousand sixteen dash fifteen, a resolution approving a waiver of non-compliance and finding compliance with statement of benefits, Jane's Investments LLC, DBA, doing business as Lafayette Auto Supply.
Mr. Williamson?
I move for passage of resolution number two thousand sixteen dash fifteen.
Second. Any questions or comments prior to the mayor?
Yes, Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, I think all of you received the letter from Lafayette Auto Supply in your packet. Again, to make this brief, they're a great company, a Lafayette company. They made a really nice investment out of Kepner Drive. They had a slight oversight in filing of their tax abatement compliance paperwork. They were three days late. As I said, they wrote a very nice letter. State law allows this body to grant a waiver for that three-day late period, and I would respectfully request that you grant this. They're a good, good people and a good Lafayette company, and we need to stand with them.
Thank you, mayor. Did the dog eat the paper or anything like that? I've heard those excuses for homework.
I graduated with John from high school, and I don't think he ever used that, so that's probably-
Any comments by members of the audience? The clerk then conduct a roll call vote, please.
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Nargie?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Aldrich Meyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downey?
Aye.
Thank you. I think we have to set a public hearing on this particular resolution.
Correct.
And I would entertain a motion for that public hearing to be held on October the fourth at six thirty-one PM.
Don't move.
Thank you. I was hearing things.
Maybe Derek can get on the phone.
Ms. Nargie?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those saying aye. Thank you. Now, I think we have one other thing to set, and that is for the two thousand seventeen budget and the Greater Lafayette Public Transportation Corporation budget. And that would be for Thursday, October the sixth, at five PM here in these chambers. Yes, sir.
Second. Mr. Clinker?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Do you then notify the particular media people? Thank you very much. Reports of standing committees, reports of special committees, reports of the mayor, miscellaneous and new business, reports of councilmen, public comment. Adjournment, Mr. Heidi?
Oh, oh!
Oh!
Quicker than that.
You're about-
Why working out? You should be faster than that.
You couldn't get out of here without hearing a break.
Thank you.
My name is Ken Jones. I live at nine twenty-two Highland Avenue. So I gave you the text of this. It's lengthy, but I think it meets the three-minute rule. So to speak to the Brick Street, Sixth Street, something really alarming, really alarming happened with the destruction of the downtown Brick Street. Of course, while trying to put the streetscape in place and beautify the downtown, which I think is a great project, we lost a historic street. But clearly, the city and the plan prides itself on being transparent. And then there are plans posted on the website. This has been discussed a lot, and it's really unclear how we moved from a plan published in October two thousand twelve, where that street was specifically noted, was quoted as being valued, and there was actually proposed money in a budget to put the bricks back. You have two excerpts from that plan document. It's on the city's website today, so of course you can read it just the same as I have. My own suspicion is that somewhere along the way, budget met reality and historic preservation lost. Brick Street economics also suggests that the city will pay for repair and replacing Sixth Street many times over the coming decades, whereas a well-laid brick street, its longevity is obvious. The Lafayette Main Street Streetscape Plan, published in twelve, lists on page nineteen, it has the reference there, that the existing conditions, the streets there, it's valued, it's important. I agree. Page fifty-eight has the proposed budget of fifty-eight thousand dollars to remove and reinstall brick pavers. The C2 Street rendering color document that you have shows a brick street rendering. Of course, you may ask, because I thought we had an ordinance that protected brick streets, and especially one that was in the middle of a historic district, seems that we don't. Although, I've given you from the historic preservation ordinance twelve oh one dot one hundred, you can read it. You can read that it refers to paving. You would think brick streets are safe. However, I did have communications with Dennis Carson, and on October thirtieth, he informed me that the Historic Preservation Commission reviewed and approved the project at two separate meetings, May twentieth and August thirty-first, two thousand fifteen. They received and reviewed the plans at the meeting. The original plans they reviewed called for removing the street, fixing the, removing the brick, fixing the street, and finishing it in asphalt. They did not issue a formal COA or certificate of appropriateness since it was an in-house project as opposed to an outside petitioner. So in the original October two thousand twelve plan, the street's important, and in two thousand fifteen, it's to be removed and replaced with asphalt. Is this when budget met reality? I don't know. My own discussions with several Historic Preservation Board members led me to believe, lead me to believe that they did not understand that the Brick Street would be destroyed. If there was an open exchange and debate on this topic, it's not evident in the public records, and you can read the rest.
Go ahead.
Okay, okay. If they didn't understand it, then how was the general public supposed to understand that things had changed since October two thousand twelve? I also find it troubling that the city is not required to obtain a COA when the ordinance so clearly relies on this mechanism to capture and communicate important historical changes in our city. Finally, let me express a fundamental concern that our few remaining brick streets are in danger. There's minimal protection for them in the city ordinances, and the processes of the Historic Preservation Board can apparently be circumvented if the petitioner is internal. We need to address the threat to our history by following the lead of cities such as Fort Wayne and Rockford, Illinois, that have ordinances to preserve and protect the brick streets. What's to be done? I believe we should consider the following. Number one, we need to restore Sixth Street to a historic Brick Street. Shouldn't have been destroyed to begin with. Number two, we need a new city ordinance that makes Brick Street protection a clear priority and requirement. And number three, the city should be required to obtain a COA from the Historic Preservation Board, just the same as any other entity when affecting changes in a historic district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Is there anyone to make a reaction to that? Is that appropriate at this time, or will it be some talk about it?
If it's something the council wants to look at going forward, what kind of ordinance, I mean, the project is going to move forward, and we have, on this particular occasion, but if you want to look at something that are remaining, first things, we try to move forward with current guidelines.
Off the top of your head, how many other brick streets do we have?
Um-
Six, Mr. Jones.
Seven.
Seven?
We have Jenny Furnish coming up with a list that you have.
Let's see. What's a pleasure of the council? Do we have anything right now, or do you want to sit on it and think about it, or?
Sit on it.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a comment. Susan Chechter, again, one zero zero one Ferry Street. I live right outside the central business historic district, and I do have two historic buildings that I am doing my best to keep relatively historic. And so it's a community thing to try to maintain historicity for downtown. It's what makes us special. It's what makes us different than Fishers and other cities that aren't historic. And so it's that, you know, the whole, there are businesses and building owners within the historic district, it costs them a lot more, a lot more, to maintain their buildings in a historic fashion. And for the city to take, to just say, yeah, but it doesn't apply to us, is really rejecting that community standard. And so many things come down to community standards around here. So I think you better think long and hard about taking a buy on this.
Thank you. Any other comments?
My name is Sean Lutz from one thousand three North Eighth Street. Would it be all right if I distribute them to you?
Sure.
So the first one is a visitor form, and these are going to have two days. And this one is the change of order. You still have to have your address and the information applied. And this is in regard to- and building upon what they have already said, I'd first like to thank the council for the time because it is getting late and we have had an eventful meeting. But in addition to that, I would like to just take a moment to admire the Main Street Streetscape Project and what it has done for the community, because it has improved crumbling sidewalks, infrastructure, as well as making many of our downtown sidewalks more accessible to the handicap. However, I think there is one fatal flaw in the destruction of Sixth Street. I think it's important that the community better understand the condition of the street so they can at least better understand the justification. I began a conversation of finding a way to work with the city to find a middle ground, whether it's using the bricks for trim or sidewalks, or finding a way to use new bricks, such as what was done on North Street, and make this really a collaboration between the community and the government as a project that we can be proud of as a city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of this young man? Thank you. Mr. Heidi?
I move to go home. How about adjournment? Are you move for adjournment? I moved to adjourn.
Somebody second before we find out an A. Second.
I'll second. He's second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those saying aye. Thank you very much.